So I'll call the meeting to order and I'll start with Sue.
Here.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, I'm here.
Excellent. Um, Gordon.
Yeah.
Uh, Peter.
There.
And Laura's running a few minutes late and I just haven't heard. Did you hear anything from Barry?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Great. Um, so we're gonna start off with, um, uh, opening the public hearing and I left my script and home, so. Um, so we have a public hearing tonight for, which is gonna open, um, for, uh, three, um.
Sarah, you can open that in your email.
Yeah, no, I have a script that I forgot print. Learning, picking a page from the month, so. Um, so we're opening the, um, application from, for three public hearings, Reed Park Floating Dock Expansion and Addendum, Morse Pier Fisherman's Facility Proposed Docks and Pier Repairs and Phase Two Tux Point Public Dock Expans- Expansion, and they have been properly noticed. Um, the, the reason we see these is because they are subject to Chapter 91 licenses and our bylaws, um, say that the, the, um, planning board must weigh in on, um, on those for using the special permit criteria. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Foss Engineering, Fiona Vardy, I believe is gonna start with the Reed Park, um, and the Morse Pier discussions, and then we'll take up the Rotunda Tux Point. Um, we've allotted an hour for this, um, uh, hearing and we also have, uh, so we expect that we will, um, continue it. Um, if you have a public, we will take comments from the board and from the public tonight, so if you, um, and in that order, so if you have a comment you wanna make, please raise your hand or I'll do my best to see them and Gail will help us with that and Sue and Chris as well. Um, so that I'll turn it over to Fiona, um, make you a co-host. Um, so welcome Fiona Vardy.
Thank you.
I guess I, can I just ask by on if you wanna do any introductory remarks at all or?
Oh gosh, no, let's leave it to the experts.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm just curious, um, if you're seeing the Google Earth on the screen.
Yeah.
All right, great. Um, well, thank you very much for the opportunity for us to present these projects in Manchester. Um, as Sarah mentioned, we have submitted the special permit applications because we are subject to Mast EP Chapter 91. Um, they are both municipal projects and located in the Manchester Inner Harbor. I'll be talking about Reed Park first. Um, and I should mention that both projects have been, um, developing in tandem with the main goals of alleviating congestion within the harbor and to support the town's waterfront economy. Um, okay. So Reed Park is located southwest of Beach Street. Um, it's an existing municipal waterfront facility that includes a 50-foot-long pass ported pier with a 63-by-4-foot aluminum gangway and approximately 340 feet of eight-foot-wide floating docks. Um, this work was completed in 2019 and the site does include existing facilities. Um, so the proposed project includes the expansion to the existing floating dock system in order to improve the access to the waterfront and will be providing additional dockage for recreational vessels as well as, um, the harbor, harbor master vessel and law enforcement vessels as needed. Um, the, uh, installation includes 22 8-by-24-foot floating, um, a floating dock system, which will be supported by 23 12-inch diameter timber piles. Um, and as I said, the, the new floats will be connected to the existing floats, um, with galvanized hardware. Um, and as I will go over a little bit more in a minute, the, um, the Reed Park project will actually create an entire walkable connection between Reed and Moscone Mo Parks, um, which would be a great recreational, um, expansion. Um, so several design iterations were considered for this project and.
You advancing slides at all because we're only seeing the Google Earth slide?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was showing you the, um, project plans. See. Okay. Are you able to see the?
Yes.
Proposed plans? Okay. All right, sorry about that. Okay. All right. Um, so the project will be seeking funding from the state's boating infrastructure grant. Um, so several alternative designs were considered to meet the very specific guidelines for this grant, um, which includes maintaining a, um, an 18-inch minimum clearance to the mud line on the land side, the landward side of the floats, as well as a minimum water depth of six feet on at least 50% of the, um, of the float on the seaward side. Um, and that being said, the, the project and the number of piles have been designed to avoid and minimize impacts from the pile driving to the minimum extent possible. Um, and as I said, the product site is served by existing utilities. Um, so it was, uh, aimed at avoiding the, um, utilities in the existing area as well. Um, I will stop there briefly. Let me know if anyone has any questions so far.
Question?
Yeah? Yes, I do. This is Gordon Brewster. This is, the one you're showing is the preferred option, correct?
Correct.
So I know you went through a bunch of iterations to get to it and this one seems to be the preferred one because of why?
Because it, it meets the, the specific guidelines for the boating infrastructure grant, um, so that the project can obtain, uh, funding to support the project, to support the work.
And if, if I could add Fiona, if you don't mind, the other, um, the other thing, uh, that's really important is the outfall pipe coming from the waste treatment plant. Uh, the, the jog was a big, that you see there, 90-degree turn was a really big deal. Um, getting that placed in the right spot, uh, and then giving us our appropriate depths front and back on the floats.
Where's the wastewater plant out from? And you just.
Uh, so.
You try.
The line to see the lines coming through.
If you control L, you can probably make it red. No, I guess not.
Let me know. I need to zoom in further.
Well, the line is the, the dot, the line is the outfall. According to that. Oh, I see, it's all of the. Okay.
I'll, I'll add that unfortunately, we don't have great plans of some rework that was done, uh, approximately 10 years ago and they changed the alignment, uh, as it came out of the wastewater plant and kinda in that specific area. Um, you know, we have very good plans from when the outfall was installed back in, uh, I think it was 92. Um, but to be, you know, very conservative, um, this alignment, uh, basically eliminated as much possibility of, of, you know, the outfall interfering with any of the piles. Um, so that was a, you know, something that contributed to going with this, this layout as well.
Yes, thank you, Nate.
And how can you zoom back out? How, it's not shown, the railroad bridge isn't shown on this, the plan I'm looking at?
Just out of view.
Yes.
So if there's a boat on that outside of the parallel to the travel?
So that's a, that's a hundred foot, that's a hundred foot run. Uh, the idea that, that corner there, we want to keep open because that, uh, 400-foot run along the tracks in the back there is where dinghies will tie up. So, uh, there's plenty of room and plenty of water with this design to allow the dinghies to get in and out.
No. My question is traffic, if a boat is tied up on the short leg there by railroad bridge, why would it not be in the travel lane of the already tight railroad bridge?
So actually it would be inside, uh, the, uh, uh, wooden wall there. You would not actually be in the channel tied up there.
So you're only gonna tie on one side of the?
No, it doesn't matter, which if you're tied up on the outside, on the Manchester Marine side, you will not be in the channel. You will not, uh, impede traffic in and out, uh, underneath the bridge.
And I just walked down there right before coming here and the woman told me that you have four feet at low.
What, what woman? Where?
The first, the dock master there. I asked how many feet at low and she said four feet, except right where the giant boat is tied up right now.
Yeah, that's, that's not correct.
Get from the. Like five feet. Five feet. All right, well. Okay, um.
Jock in here allows him to put the piles where they want to without interrupting.
You gotta sneak up three, two, one.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm talking to myself. The, so the configuration with that, I thought that was very interesting and little L to the right to the top of the screen. That allows you to avoid the sewer lines, is that correct by, with pile installation?
So the piles are aligned so that, the idea is that they definitely will miss the sewer pipe, but that jog has to be in place. If you come from, um, if you look at drawing to the right where the existing 250 feet ends out to, uh, that turn, it's shallow right there. So those flows had to be further out to get appropriate depth.
Okay, yeah, that was, it was actually quite an interesting analysis where I read all the, uh, the alternates that came up with, with how this could be laid out here and the thought process behind it and how you arrived at it, so I, this is good, this is good clarification.
I give all the credit to the engineers.
How many linear feet of, um, dock?
We're adding 500 to the 250 that exist.
Plus the jog that comes down, right? Whereas this, the lower L isn't, so I'm looking at 278 plus 252.
Oh, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't add the three, um, free tie-up spots either down at the Beach Street end.
Where, where's that?
That's, that's not part of this, yeah, that's, the three original docks, 75 feet that were here from the 1930s is still part of the system, the free tie-up space. That's on the other end. Yep, I can see it right there.
I don't see it.
It's, it's to the far right on the Beach Street end. There's 75 feet, that first 75 feet is the original 75 feet that, um, we had at Reed Park.
Oh. All right, um, you have more Fiona or?
Um, not for Reed Park.
Okay, Laura has a question. Hi, this is Laura, I'm Fiona and a couple of questions regarding public access for the Chapter 91 requirements and, um, for small self-paddle boats like the kayaks and paddleboards. Um, so the first question is, uh, and I apologize if I came a little late, so if you already talked about the kind of public welcome walking route between the two parks? I don't have time.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, but you're gonna get to that?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, um, second question is regarding small boats who don't need to tie off, but might wanna lift onto the, uh, docks just in the place of rotting here, let's take a break or come up to, uh, Ethanol Park for the concert, whatever it might be. Is there a place available to those boaters that will, to the shore?
Right, so we don't, uh, we never have, uh, so, uh, practice allowed the kayaks and paddleboards to be on the dock. It becomes, uh, whether it was the 75 feet or the current configuration, it's just, it's not safe. So if you go, um, down to Reed Park right now, right next to the park itself, there's a little shingle beach there and boats will still be able to paddle in behind and get down to that nice little shingle beach and haul kayaks and paddleboards up like they do now and, uh, walk up into the park and either to watch a concert or get an ice cream or more exercise.
On the, on the side where you're saying the little skips are gonna tie up or between the railroad tracks and the long leg?
Correct. Yep, yep.
There'll be room to do that, that any tie, higher low tie?
Yep.
Okay, makes sure that they're taken, then you're gonna get to the, uh, publicly accessible there, how you connect the gestrate between the two parts. Thought I heard you say that when I came in.
Yes, yeah, they're shown, um, on the Morse Pier project plans.
So.
Got to shortly.
We haven't got there yet. Your Google Earth image, if you go back to that, it's, uh, unfortunately, uh, the image in your, on Google Earth and looking at it and in your document is not when the harbor is occupied. And it doesn't reflect a new exit pier, I believe. It's, it less be, maybe it's a winter image?
It is, yeah, this is, uh, off-season image for sure.
Okay, so we have a lot of boats moored there. What happens to those moorings or those?
So, uh, all of those moorings are bow and stern, so they don't swing. There are, I think, um, five that have to be relocated within that same area. Uh, it's, it's really just gonna be a matter of, um, neatening up and making nice neat rows. Uh, it'll be a lot like the, uh, new docks over in front of Manchester Marine. Excuse me, where there's room on either side to travel down through. It just requires a little bit of time and effort to put those in nice neat rows. We won't lose any moorings.
And the goals of this, can you just restate the goals here, which are safety and what are the other goals?
Well, the, the goals that I've always stated are safety, uh, uh, the navigation piece, but public access and, um, this facility when completed, if, if completed, I see as the long-term means of funding the harbor, harbor projects, infrastructure dredging, seawalls, repairing piers when they need, all those different, uh, important things that there was no funding source for, um, 10 years ago. Uh, and this, this facility will go very, very far, uh, toward making this harbor self-funding. And it also is a real boon for the businesses in town. All of the restaurants, the stores, they have all benefited just from what's already there.
So is this, fine, this is Peter Morton, is there a fiscal impact, right, in here somewhere?
You mean cost to the town?
No, the, as well the benefits, the fiscal benefits to the town that you were just explaining.
Sure, so will we charge, well, for example, we've got this old 250 feet now uh, with no, uh, amenities, uh, at $3 a foot for overnight boaters and the $10, uh, an hour to come in and type and go use the restaurants. Last year, this facility generated $32,000, which covered every dime of what it costs to staff it and then put money back into, uh, the general fund, uh, $20,000 back into the general fund. Um, and then the benefit to all of the businesses who, I think if you were to go downtown and, and pull, uh, the stores, they would tell you the bookstore, the restaurants, um, would be the supermarket, hardware store, Dunkin' Donuts, they would all share that, uh, they've seen an increase in traffic, uh, that's boating related because of the dock. I hope that was the right answer to the question.
I, I mean, is it reasonable to get, uh, it's something that projects what the new structure will generate?
Oh, well, so just, uh, real simple math, if, um, we're getting $3 a foot now with no amenities, um, we put in the water and electricity, which is part of this plan. We go to $5 a foot and, uh, we triple the space. I, I project that we could generate $150,000 a year at this facility. That would be 100 and, anyway, $135,000 annually that could go back into maintaining the harbor, paying for a bond that we'll have to raise to pay for dredging, replacing a boat.
So one of the questions I have is that, that certainly one of the, um, harbor issues is the length of the mooring list. And if you have enough space there for, I don't know, X boats, 20 boats, 15, how, um, and those are transient boaters coming in and it doesn't help your moor, or the mooring list, which is a, has for decades been a, a problem, um, something that the taxpayers repeatedly want to see, um, shortened. Why, why are we electing to have a dock space for transients at the expense of what could potentially be mooring space if we really have six feet there?
Right, so, uh, we could probably add another half a dozen moorings right along the shore if everything were neatened and lined up just like we would do for, uh, the Reed Park project. But this is also the commercial part of the harbor. This is the area that for centuries has, uh, been dedicated to the commercial fishermen. And, uh, I am not inclined to think it's a good idea to put recreational moorings in, in area and start squeezing out, uh, the commercial fishermen. Uh, then the other piece is that I, I have a hard time figuring out how the town will pay for its infrastructure needs in the coming decades when grant funds dry up for harbors like Manchester, small, uh, communities like this. Uh, when funding is going to go to Salem and Gloucester, New Bedford and Fairhaven and Boston, all of those larger towns that, uh, are seeing impact to their communities because of climate change. Uh, I don't know where the money will come from to support the needs of communities like Manchester. And this, this is real estate that fronts railroad tracks and a waste treatment plant. It's, uh, an opportunity for the town to put itself in a good place fiscally to take care of itself in the coming decades. That's, that's been my thought process for this.
Um, and face, can you just advance it to the, um, slide that shows the plant proposed plan, please? Okay, and then I, I have one other question, but, um, Sue and Chris, if you have questions, speak up. Um, my, so the goals are safety, public access for transient public access, long-term revenue and economic development.
Right, I think it's.
Yeah, if we're bringing it in public who don't know the harbor and we've got, and you're worried about putting in moorings for people because of the conflict with commercial boats, how is, how, how does this, I don't, I'm trying to understand how safety has improved here. It's very tight and people coming in with big boats, spend the night, how does that, how does that improve safety?
Well, uh, this part of the harbor when I first started was, um, we had no staff at the dock. We had, uh, three one-hour spots for boats up to 24 feet, so you could get three boats on there and boats used to race into the harbor. They raced and they rafted and they overwhelmed the fisherman's facility and they overwhelmed the boat club. And the moment we put in the 250 feet with staff who made sure that the fisherman's facility wasn't used, um, by recreational boaters, uh, cutting out our commercial fishermen and we started collecting revenue from a whole aspect of, of boaters that came and used this harbor and never contributed a dime. Uh, we improved, uh, safety pretty dramatically. Um, I would say in this case, the safety improvements will come from, uh, the realignment of the mornings. It's already vastly safer to drive down into the boat club or to, uh, this facility than it was because of the bow and stern moorings. Part of this project is to finish up that piece and, uh, put these moorings exactly where they should be, just like in Camden Harbor, uh, where vessels over 100 feet long, sailing vessels over 100 feet long can come in and tie up at berths and, uh, discharge and take on passengers and go in and out, uh, safely. Camden is not a big harbor, um, but they've done exactly this sort of thing with their moorings and you can navigate safely.
I would argue this is, we're a very different community than Camden, but that's just my opinion. Um, and it's a very narrow passage to get there to put ring, are you thinking of others, is there gonna be a, a limit on how, uh, how large vessels can be besides the fact that they'll bottom out at six feet?
We already have a limit in length of 60 feet. Uh, we, we've had our first year here before we put that length limit on, we had an 85-foot boat come in and that was before we'd, uh, done, that following that, we subsequently did some more adjustment of moorings to open up the channel more. Now, I would never encourage an 85-foot boat to come down on a weekend, but I, I can tell you there's been many weekends where we've had 50-foot-plus boats come down and, uh, safely navigate and tie up at the dock.
A question. Uh question, uh Chris and um Sodianni. Questions? What we should probably do is jump to the other two pieces and then we'll um, I'm sure we probably want to take a sidewalk, is my suggestion. To look at this. Um so uh uh Faith, if you can jump to the um worst here. Overview?
Sure. So Morse Pier is just across the harbor from Reed Park. Um this products is, this product is intended to alleviate the dockage for or the congestion. And support the commercial fishermen vessels. Um right now includes the existing town-owned and managed Morse Town Pier and gangway and landing floats. Um for uh transient vessels. And both performed an inspection of the pier and its components in twenty twenty-two. Um in order to uh put forth a, an engineering design plan to support the town's goals that we've been talking about. And also to recommend, excuse me, minor repairs so that the existing pier. So, and this proposed condition site plan also shows the walkable connection that I mentioned earlier. So the existing gangway will be repositioned and. Um four finger floats will be added to connect to the existing Reed Park. Float system. And there are four by thirty-foot finger floats and. In alignment on this side and then an additional singular forty by thirty finger float will be added to the existing Reed Park float. Um the docking system will be supported by fourteen uh twelve-inch diameter piles. And water service will be provided to the new slips via um the existing water service at the site. Okay, oopsie, sorry. Um does anyone have questions on this site plan so far?
Now, this is Gordon again, would you mind describing, I'm in Mascanomo Park, I want to get out to the, to the new piers. Because this is another one, when you went through quite an exhaustive analysis of options that could be put in here. Would you mind just describing how I get onto the pier?
Get down on to, I apologize, it's the chief of police, I have to take this.
I'll jump in, um so you can use basically the existing gangway, um similar to how you get down to the. Uh existing uh landing float, uh we're just basically re-organizing orientating uh. That float to this new orientation, so it's going from the existing Morse Pier, uh you know, that's off of the driveway. Uh into Mascanomo and then you can then walk down around and they'll connect into the existing Reed Park floats.
And can you be clear, clear which of the alternatives you're uh recommending? Read one, one.
Sorry, you're referring to the one on the screen?
Yeah, what, what is the, the alternative that you're looking at? Page eleven. Preferred alternative, okay. So three A is your preferred alternative?
Um correct, I'm just double checking.
I think, I think.
Yes.
Sorry, everyone.
Okay, go ahead, go back to the, the preferred alternative, I guess. Questions from the board.
There was a question um that I couldn't answer um. Is that Gordon?
Yeah.
So I think your question was, how do you get down on to the floats?
Yeah, this is, by the way, I did, I agree with your analysis, I think this one is the least impactful and probably. Best use of the of the uh force, but if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, sure, yeah, so this does take advantage of the dredging that the town and and the state paid for in uh twenty seventeen, eighteen. It is in that dredge footprint. So you can access either, if you were to go down to Morse Pier today. Uh looking out the Fisherman's Pier, there's a ramp on the right that goes down to a float with two lobster boats. That's, that would be the same location approximately uh. On that side of the, the pier going down onto the floats. And or alternatively, you could go over to Reed Park and go down the existing ramp there.
And the pilings are. Uh twenty feet above mean load water, is that what I'm reading? On all of both these projects? How far above mean low water are the pilings and how far above the street level are the pilings? Yeah, we can't.
So they'll, they'll match existing uh Reed Park piles, you know, in material and uh elevations.
Yeah, so the uh this matches the um existing Reed Park float pile. And also meets the FEMA hundred-year storm elevation. Um I, if I zoom in.
And why pilings instead of anchors or or uh some sort of uh non-piling?
So if, if we were to put this on floats. Uh the movement would be too great for the ramp, the existing ramp. Uh I, if. It never would have been signed off on. We would have lost, depending on wind direction, we'd have lost room in the harbor or we'd have lost room between the floats and the shore. Potentially um taking away that required uh. Minimum clearance from the mud line. And these are also infinitely safer, I wouldn't. If there's a storm coming, in many cases, uh when there's been a storm coming. Boats from Area Seven have been able to come in and tie up safely at Reed Park Dock during the storm. If this were a mooring-supported facility, I never would have been able to do that.
Is there any kind of policy that this is available to mooring holders in storm events and not to transients or is that, how's that work?
So it's been just mooring holders so far. Uh I have had people call from other communities and try to rent space during a storm. Um but my, my policy, and there's nothing in the rules and regs, is to allow boaters from Area Seven. Um to come in and. Use those docks, so it's our boaters.
I have another question, but other questions, go ahead more.
I have a couple, one is, and they're unrelated to each other, one is, uh how does this fit within the harbor master plan?
Well, the harbor master plan la- is lagging still.
Okay, that's, that's how I address this area yet, is there any kind of overall statement about?
No, but I think we should, or? No, unfortunately, except that, so the question was, how, how, that Laura was asking, how does this fit with a harbor master plan? Except for the fact that um. Mooring list length. Is of great concern to the people who came to the.
The length of the list.
The length, the length of the list, and the fact that people sit on it for decades. Um and so um that's a different kind of public access. I also have a, I have another question, uh but good, um I thought a little bit about this, um how do you? It's just so much infrastructure in a storm to maintain at winters. And we, you know, when I look at it, I, I think. And so the, and then the other thing is, you have kids playing at the playground at Mascanomo Park. First of all, there is a pedestrian walkway across to Reed Park, it's along the sidewalk, but. Tax point, we know that one out of twenty kids goes down the dock without life jacket. And now you've got um a playground next door and a dock. With all kinds of the lures of darkness. And um boats coming and going and I, I, I'm. I really worry about a thousand law, thousand feet of dock by the time you go from Morse Pier, eight hundred, whatever it is, all the way around. With kids and boats and um and. To me, it doesn't, it doesn't add safety, I, I don't buy, it just, it doesn't add safety on traffic, it doesn't add safety on pedestrians. Having a hard, so I'm, I'd like Foss to help us understand, you, you're the consultant and you've done these. Help us understand why this is adding safety to the harbor traffic and to the, to the whole, the whole area. Then I have one more comment. Yeah, I, I'm wondering if there's a response from the Foss consultants based on their work in this kind of project.
Sure, um well, especially for the Morse. Uh portion of the harbor, it's, as you said, this is intended to alleviate the congestion, so relocating. Um births from, from, from just existing traffic, relocate relocating the births to. Um the proposed Morse project, um it will reduce the navigational hazards. Um and there's a little bit more open space for them to navigate as well. Let me go back to.
Children already go down on those docks as well, we see children down on the fishermen's floats on both sides often. Uh we have children that, uh teenagers that jump and dive and swim off the pier. Uh and and what's changed with all of that is there's staff down there. There are staff members working on the docks, uh they very much understand how we manage those docks and. Um the messaging that we give to people who come down uh to the young people that jump off the pier. And one of the advantages of having the uh fishermen's floats go around, that's commercial, those are commercial boats. Uh but our staff will be able to walk around, all the way around to the other side and um. Be there to either directly interact with children. If it's children who are running down away from their parents untended. Or uh with the parents, going over to the parents and saying, hey, listen, if you're gonna come down on these docks, you need to go back up and get. One of the life jackets on the lender tender rack right there at Morse Pier. I think a, a real safety benefit was, starting in twenty nineteen and continues today and will be, is the fact that. We have staff people down there, helping, assisting, directing, making sure that people are. Being as safe as they can possibly be.
I have one other comment, that is, do we have a rendering of what this looks like from beach treating? The pilings, because I.
I've never seen one.
Quite different from the uh along the railroad tracks. We spend a lot of time in our, we will spend some time probably in our next public hearing talking about views from a highway. And this is a view from our downtown. So, I, I'm wondering if you've done a, a rendering of what that will look like.
We have not, that wasn't considered in part of Foss's scope, but we could certainly add it to their scope of work. If that was something the planning board wanted to see.
I think what we should do is maybe we're gonna take a sidewalk um out there, and I know that it's gonna be, we probably have some public comment, let's. Great, uh any more comments from the board, it looks like Laura has called out these two because they're kind of a package.
Sure, um this is really related to construction, uh not the permanent plant, but I'm looking at the utility site plant S one oh two. For Reed Park, we're going back to the previous project. And I'm seeing, yeah, maybe you could bring up S one oh two. Right, so at the top of that drawing is a proposed six-foot-wide utility trench. Through the center of the park, if I can read that correctly. And uh I'm just looking at the underlying Google photos and thinking about um stewardship of the park, so you have several large mature trees in there. And I was thinking about critical root zone and the potential for impact on the park trees with that six-foot wide utility trench. So this may be diagrammatic. Uh to be verified, but I think it's important to look at the best route. For the utilities that does the least harm to the parks, mature trees.
So this utility, the proposed um trench it avoids all of the existing trees in the park and it just goes through grass?
Well, the grass may have tree critical root zones, I think an arborist, uh you know, if we have to town arborist or an independent arborist could verify that because the. Uh it needs to be out from, you know, under the drip line and there are also some. Best practices about how you actually trench within tree root zones to avoid, so I think that would be a valuable service for an arborist to be. Um taking a look at this and providing recommendations to the town.
Yeah, we can certainly do that and I'll note that, you know, because it will be a force main, you know, so it's gonna be pumped, it doesn't have to. You know, be a, a direct straight line, so.
Yeah, great.
Would have some flexibility in, in routing it, you know, around, you know, if we did encounter a large root or things like that. That we can, you know, generally avoid it because it would be a, you know.
So it's just water and electricity or is there? Sewer too?
Sewer too.
Yep, sewer.
Because of a pump out?
Correct.
Where's the pump out?
Down on the far end is where I've always envisioned it, as far from the park as possible. Down where we would keep the majority of our public safety vessels. At the end of the dock.
All right, um Sue and Chris, any comments or questions right now on these two? All right, um let's take any comments from the public on these two, um we're gonna probably be another, excuse me, cell signaling, we'll probably need another ten minutes before some. Okay, thanks, um any uh public comments? Yeah, help me online.
Fiona needs to take, to give up the screen for, so I can see what's happening, thanks Fiona.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands up.
Mr. Gates?
I've got several comments.
Can you state your name and um?
I'm listening to the presentation. Doesn't sound like they're paying any attention. Climate change, raising the surface level of the harbor water, considering the open limits. Five decades and. I've got no idea if the bottom of the harbor rises in tandem faster or longer fast. But whatever it does, it is highly toxic, especially in the inner harbor. Where it is so toxic, the real treasures, we have to take the snail out, well out of the sea to get them. I've been told that it's too toxic for land. I don't know the swimming in the inner harbor, with the increase of land-based infrastructure. Or of these traps. Works in the coming decade. Worse in the coming decades and make the water even more unhealthy. Using the shingle to launch kayaks sounds like a great idea. Place for children to go and play and splash around.
Okay, great. Um, let me just ask, can I ask, uh, boss if they've done any, um, excuse me, let me, uh, let's just ask the consultant if they did any, um. Toxicity tests or if there's, uh, if, if there's a, um, concern about. Toxicity that would be stirred up with pilings or other on this project. Do we still have faith on board on?
Fiona.
Yes.
Fiona, sorry.
Uh, no problem. So we, when we are doing it, doing the initial survey, um, and. We did soil borings to test the existing conditions on the site and we also have the dredging results. So no toxicity is not a concern at this site.
Great, thank you. Um, Maury.
Yeah, a question.
Give your name and.
I'm Maury, grade thirty seven, Proctor Street, Manchester. Um, a question and then a comment. Um, so first the question. Um, when you showed the new pier configuration at, um, at the fisherman's dock. It looked like there were four by thirty foot finger piers sticking out. And I was curious with those, those would be for fishing boats that are currently on moorings. If that's correct, and would those moorings now be available for people who are on the waiting list and trying to get moorings? In Manchester.
Yeah, so the, thanks Maury. Uh, the, the goal, uh, moving what would probably be our most senior, uh. Lobsterman into those spots would be to, uh, we have a waitlist for, uh, commercial operators. Uh, looking for a space in Manchester. Uh, what I'd really like to see is to get, um. The number back up to what it was when I first started here. So we'd move six, maybe seven. Of the lobster boats in, uh, it wouldn't be all the big ones, uh, obviously the space would dictate that a couple would be the smaller ones. But that we could then bring two or three, uh. Of the lobstermen who are on the waitlist for a spot in to bring the town back up to that, uh, same strength, same number. We had back in twenty twelve, twenty eleven.
Yes, so just to follow on, is there sufficient parking for that fishing activity? At Masconoma Park, given all of the other activity there?
Good, good. Good question. Uh, there was in twenty twelve. So as far as twenty twenty four goes. Uh, I think we all know parking is a huge challenge.
Are there any changes contemplated with this plan?
I, I don't take any parking into consideration. I, for me, the parking is parking for boats. Um, as far as the, uh, commercial lobsterman, but one of the reasons I didn't want to bring in more than. The number that were here when I started is partly because of that, because of the, the, uh. The issue with space up on land. But I didn't, I didn't think it would be unfair to try to get as close to that original number as possible. We certainly have enough on the commercial waitlist to, to do that.
Okay, um, do you have a quick comment?
I had a quick comment and it was really about the pilings and, um, there was. A drawing that was a little hard to see showing elevation of pilings. And I think you said they were twelve, fourteen inches in diameter steel. And, and I think we started to see those showing up in Manchester. And there was also a comment made about perhaps a rendering being made or available. And I would strongly consider that there be a rendering put together so people have an understanding of what this is going to look like. I think we've taken a harbor that is absolutely one of the gems on the coast of New England. And we've transformed it into something that looks like a small marina. And, um, when you look at the pilings as you come into Manchester Harbor by Tux Point. And as you come down this harbor and you look at these green pilings, they are here for a long time. And I just feel that we ought to go into this eyes open and understand. What these pilings look like as you come down Union Street and you look straight down Manchester Harbor. At Marble Head Light in the distance, you now have pilings all over the place and there will be more and more of them. And I realize there is an economic advantage of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in staffing to help with that. But at the end of the day, are we putting ourselves in a position where we've given up so much that this town has to look at? For an economic gain that maybe should be questioned a little more carefully. So I would strongly recommend we get some renderings of what these pilings look like. From Union Street and from Masconoma Park and understand where this is going. Thank you.
Um, let's, um, jump to one more set of pilings. Uh, who is, um, who do I need to give the, um, control to or, or Fiona, do you have the? Jim, do I need?
Yeah, you can give it to me.
Jim.
Okay.
Jimmy.
Thank you Fiona.
Sorry, Anne has a comment, sorry.
Um.
Anne Harrison.
About the height, the, Mr. Gates is, Anne Harrison, thirteen touch point. Mr. Gates is concerned about tie, um, sea level rise. The pilings are as tall as they are to deal with the projected sea level rise in the next fifty years. So. No, it's the bottom probably won't come up that much. And the park will certainly flood, but the intention is to have the pilings tall enough that even with a major storm. We're not going to have floats and boats traveling around the harbor alone, uh, on board.
Thank you. Um, but we're going to move to the, uh, we'll have, they are not going to close this out tonight. So don't, don't, um. Let's jump to the, uh, rotunda. We do have a lot to get and we have Jimmy Hill from Foss to guide us through that one.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Jimmy Hill with, uh, both infrastructure and environment. Guess say it like you're from Green Bay. All right, we're going to hit share here. All right, everybody see my screen. I've got the, just the application, uh, up. Uh, so this is for Tux Point, Tux Point, uh, phase two of the, uh, public dock facility project on behalf of the town in Manchester by the sea.
I'm sorry, can you just, um, shrink down your, uh, make this bigger and shrink down your table contents on the left?
Sure, I'll be jumping around some, so, yep, yep, no problem. If you can see that. I'm just highlighting the area here, uh, and, and we'll get in, into some other photos and all that. So, uh, here's the existing, um. Uh, rotunda and, uh, solid fill pier and, uh, timber pier coming out. This actually is a photo from twenty twenty. When we first did our inspection of the site, um, and it showed, you know, some, some, uh, some piles that were unsatisfactory, um, that need to be replaced. And obviously the site has kind of changed over time. We've had some, um, uh, some weather events. And, uh, if you've been down to the site, you, you see that it's roped roped off currently. Um, so I'm going to jump over to our existing conditions plan. This would be on page one hundred and forty nine of the application. Um, so we can see here, it's the existing, uh, timber, timber structure, uh, with, with the rotunda. Um, we've got a solid fill paver lined, uh, uh, ramp leading up to it. Um, and then the, uh, the existing decking, um, there's some broken decking in there and some piles underneath. Uh, this is the existing elevation of the deck here. I'll zoom in so everybody can see. We got fourteen point one. Me, uh, mean low water, be mean low water. So that's, uh, about two feet under the existing FEMA AE zone. Um, and so we're proposing to replace this with a, uh, this timber, timber structure with a steel structure in the exact same footprint. Uh, the only thing that's really changing with the footprint is that we're reducing the number of piles. We're going from, uh, a total of thirty six twelve inch timber piles. We're reducing that to seventeen steel pipe piles. Um, and we propose to raise the deck at elevation of five feet. So that'd be nineteen feet mean low water. And that's, uh, about two feet above that AE twelve zone. Um, in order to get up to this deck elevation, we're going to have to, uh, angle up the structure. And we're going to have to build a small angle on the solid fill as well. It'll be a one on twenty slope, um, starting at, let's see. Starting down here, we, the slope, uh, continues up through the, the steel structure, which will have the same timber facade. Same design, um, as, as, as existing. Um, and it actually will be the same rotunda. So the rotunda will be taken off and it put, put back on. Um, it'll be safely stored. Uh, as part of this project two, there will be, um. Uh, the existing gangway platform will be raised and there'll be some steel structure added to that, uh, to enhance it. And I will jump now to a model because we do have a model of this project and I think everybody would like to see that. Um, so this is how the view changes slightly. Um, it actually enhances the view by reducing the number of piles, the steel pipe piles. These will be, uh, piles to match the, uh, the piles that were placed as phase one of the project. Where they, they kind of reconfigured the, uh, floating, the floating dock zone over there. Um, and those are the same steel. Uh, let's see if we can see here. Yeah, perfect, great. Uh. The steel pipe piles and these are just renderings, not photos. So they have caps on them and everything. Um, so to kind of, to summarize here, we also have a. Uh, order of conditions for the project from Conservation Commission. Um, and we have a chapter ninety one minor mod. So, uh, we applied to chapter ninety one full license. And they came back with a minor mod to an unlicensed, uh, structure. Um, and they, they said that, you know, we're, we're doing the right thing by raising the, the rotunda to that elevation, um. And, and no, and no less, and then staying within the footprint, um, you know, from an aerial footprint and reducing the footprint of, um, of impacts. With those steel pipe piles. Um, if you are going through the alternates. This is on page twenty of the application up, page, sorry, page nineteen. Uh, the selected alternative is one B, uh, and that is a steel structure maintaining the existing pure footprint. Uh, with seventeen piles at a rough order magnitude cost of two point three million and that's all I have.
Thanks Jimmy.
Questions from, uh, board?
So five A, this is Gordon again. So. I went through the analysis that you did and what we're effectively ending up with is the rotunda built on a platform. Or, uh, up higher up in the air, correct? Is it, is it as simple as that?
Correct. Yeah, and, um, and it's a steel structure with timber facade instead of it, the existing timber. Uh, that's out there, um, which the anticipated service life for steel is about fifty years. So we get a little bit more life out of it for, uh, for what we're building.
Same footprint, same walkway and the access to all the, the new docks that are out there and floating docks will be the same as it is right now.
Yeah, so as part of phase one, there was a, a new gangway that was secured and this gangway. Uh, was, was, um, purchased by the town or however. Got it, uh, with, with this project in mind, with raising the, uh, rotunda so that it, it will, it'll fit that project too.
A, a question about the slope of the walkway that's being increased. How, what did you say? What's the increase in slope there?
It'll be a one on twenty slope. So I can go back to. And so we've got quite a bit of. Just here. So we'll start with the existing, the existing, it's more flat. It's actually just flat. Uh, and the, the proposed will come up, uh, with a one on twenty to, to meet that grade. And we couldn't do it all with the solid filler, it'd be too steep. So the, uh, the steel structure will be angled too. So it's a one on twenty all the way through the solid fill. Uh, up until you get to an elevation nineteen feet.
And so that slope is ADA compliant.
That is, uh, great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Laura, uh, this is Laura. Is the, um, length, is the run of the slope also compliant? What, how long is the twenty, how long is that five percent slope?
Ninety feet.
Ninety feet. So I think you need a landing. See, or is that, no, I guess you're in a ramp, so it should be okay.
Sure, right.
It is a long run, um. I think it's important to get the details right on, you know, it's a historic structure overall. I think like. I have no comment on the raising it above the sea level rise and so forth. Um, there have been some modifications. Made to the structure like the access to the, the sort of gangway to the, uh. To the float below where the kind of historic gate was removed and just some pressure treated. Got a two by four, you know, rails were inserted in its place. And so these are details, but in terms of the finish of the. Um, retaining wall and, uh, you know, the woodwork on the rails and gates and so forth. I think we should, um, look carefully at detailing that correctly so that it doesn't feel like it's, you took the parts. Apart and then put them back together in a way that is not, um, good stewardship, but then short resource.
So, yeah, and the, the whole idea is to maintain the aesthetic, right? I mean, the, we're really just. Raising the structure, making it so that that land or the, you know, the, the ramp works with the structure. Um, works with the, the floats, the gangway down to the floats. And this is an alternative the town landed on. And yeah. We do propose that, you know, we're, we're matching the existing facade on the outside. And then also with the, you know, you know, Derby, a little bit more solid fill coming up above what is existing. Um, and so, yeah, in, in the plans, we do propose to match that to existing. Um, and, and we found some contractors out there that do a really good job of that. Um, you know, matching the, uh, historic his, uh, historic aesthetic.
And that steel stringer, does that have any kind of a skirt over or do you just look at the side of the stringer?
Yeah, that, that's shown right here, uh, the decorative timber fisher.
Okay.
Yep. So that'd be very similar to what's, what's out there now, the, the white paneling. So, uh, Jimmy, I think one of the things that was addressed here, uh, the, the quick and easy, uh. Deck and pressure treated deck and railings on the landing that goes down to the floats. It would be important that we have. And it may well already be, but have the matching rail, matching decking, uh, to the rest of the facility.
Yeah, that cut, a cutout that goes down the gangway.
Yeah.
Cause you're personally a lot of time, it's pretty coarsely done in contrast to the rest of the. Or more ornamental lumber.
Yeah.
So that would be corrected. And then the granite stones get picked up and relayed and all of the same materials go back down.
Yeah, okay, Gordon.
So I, I have a, this is a, an aesthetic question about the rotunda itself. It's been there for a long time. The idea of taking it down and then putting it on shore until the platform is built and then reconstructing it. Uh, I assume you've done analysis on the, on the rotunda itself to see that that in fact can happen.
Believe this part of the alternatives analysis, they, they did look into that rather than building a new, um. We, rather, we did look into that rather than building a completely new rotunda. Um, I believe this is a simple crane pick. I do have Ben Foley on. I'm not sure if he has an answer, uh, for this exact question, but he did work through some of these alternatives. Um, so I'm not sure if it's just a simple crane pick, um, or there's maybe more involved.
Yeah, just if you can hear me, just want to make sure before I start talking.
We got you.
Uh, yeah, so our, our structural designer, uh, came up with a couple of different alternatives for the pick. Uh, so it was either build this steel structure underneath as a temporary lift or he really recommended, uh, taking it down in pieces. So we can, like that, that straight, straight up lift with, uh, the steel framing. Kind of messes with the structure itself. So it's almost better to take it apart and then build it back together, take it apart in pieces and build it back together. So it will be the, the same structure and then that way they can replace elements that need to be replaced, uh. If they see any like damage or rod or, yeah, any, any individual pieces that need to be, be restored.
Thanks Ben.
Who are, um, Chris, any comments or questions? No, okay.
Can I just ask one last question? So. Byron, you mentioned, uh, grants being available for Morrison Reed Park construction. Is there any potential for grants for this project?
Yeah, so we've secured a hundred percent of Reed Park, uh, super economic. Seaport Economic Council gave eighty percent of the cost of the engineering permitting for the Fishman's Facility and for. The rotunda. And when they do that, they expect you to come back and apply for construction funding up to eighty percent. So up and that's up to a million dollars through the Seaport Economic Council. There's also another potential grant opportunity through coastal zone management. Which could. Get us a lot closer to the two point three million dollars for this project. Now. I say all this, but. If. If the state. Doesn't like Manchester's plan for the MBTA. Then at least the Seaport Economic Council grant. Will not be available to us. We would not get that million dollars.
Thank you.
So. And then I'm not sure if that affects the coastal zone management grant. I suspect it would. So then we'd be looking at. Some. Other funding. Reality.
Okay, any comments from the public? And I'm going to limit any comments to two minutes on the rotunda only.
I have a question.
Hold on. Okay, Mrs. Gates, go ahead. I'm gonna ask that you speak just to the rotunda and. Thank you.
School Street investment and after question. To the gentleman who just said, if we don't have the MBTA plan voted for, then they might not give us that. That has nothing to do with housing. Why the rotunda will be excluded?
Chris, you or Sue, you want to explain that? Or my Mark, maybe. I'm gonna let Mark explain. So the question, if you put in here was, why does the. Grant for the rotunda have anything to do with the MBTA housing?
So if the town does not pass MBTA zoning by law that's been drafted and. And by the end of the year, we would be deemed noncompliant with. The law, section three A. And for being noncompliant, we would no longer be eligible for a long list of state grants. This is according would be one of them, so.
Is that correct? Is that allowed really to be done by the state to the towns and cities?
Yes, it's the it's the grants are from the state and it's the grants are from the state, various offices at the state. Offer grants to cities and towns under the condition that you meet other requirements, whether it's a grant application requirement. Or a requirement of another law. So. I'm sure obtaining the special permits required by the town for. These from the planning board for these are a requirement of the application just as. Being in compliance with section three A is a requirement for the grants as well.
Okay, so we need to continue these hearings. I'm sorry. Okay.
Way way furious.
Anne Harrison thirteen text my word. Are the materials that you're working from available to the rest of us?
Yes, they are. Either in my office or I believe Gail has a set of them as well.
Would you put them at this house clerk?
Yes, there would be also filed with the court.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. And I guess the other thing is, are they available electronically? Because some of the, a lot of the numbers are too small to read. Or I need a magnifying glass, like the depths of.
So outside of the floats.
Right, outside of floats and all kinds of. Important details. So maybe we can get one one copy electronically. And then we can also put them on the website.
You have electronic copies in today's meeting packet.
Packet, okay.
On SharePoint.
Yeah.
Excuse me, SharePoint is not generally available.
No, no, we'll put so we'll get it on. So we have it electronically. We now need to put it in a generally available place. Yeah.
With.
Yep.
Playing board.
Okay, great. Thank you. So. We need to continue this hearing. There is not here. It looks like July ninth. Is going to be a better date. That's the Tuesday instead of July eighth. For. People for and self signaling. Can we continue to? July that if that's a kind of ends up being a problem, is that kind of? I guess we we could meet quickly. And then let's schedule a site walk.
Good.
Okay, so I'm good. Does that work for people? I think that works. Sue and Chris, I think that worked for you. Okay, great.
Much for me.
Okay, great. In lieu of the in lieu of the eight, because the eight has a problem for. So we're going to continue to the. July ninth. With a public here with a site walk to be scheduled between now and then. I also. I think we're. Maybe we can take it up at the end, but I think we're going to want to see. A rendering review issue, the issues that came up, the financial analysis, the mooring, the net mooring count. Of the two, I think the two projects together. And a little bit more about the historic. Maybe ask the Historic Commission or some little bit more of a narrative about the historic. Renovations. And I think I've just circled them all. They are all within our special purpose. How that happens. Okay.
Would it be possible to forward the questions to both, just so we can? Know what information would be helpful to provide?
We will. Great. Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll take a motion to continue this public hearing to, I think we'll do six thirty again. Yeah, because Sue, you look like you're gonna say something.
All moved.
Second.
July ninth.
All in favor. Great. Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you, Byon.
Good night, everybody.
And Nate or Nate, whoever.
And Nate and Fiona and Jimmy. Thank you.
Thanks, all. Have a good night.
Thanks, great.
Okay, tell somebody, maybe.
Schedule the site walk.
Yeah, we will. I would.
Oh, all right. Before they left.
Before they left. I think we'll have to get back to them. I want to keep this moving. Some manners on. Can somebody grab? Maybe we can take a quick stretch. Stand up, everybody. Sounds good. And some, oh, you're here. Can you send Mark Mark Lewski in? Folks, please.
Just a system requirement.
Yeah.
Is your watch?
Great, so. Yeah. Wow. Well.
Sarah, it's Gail. May I remind you of something?
Yes, absolutely.
All the materials that are in SharePoint are also in the meeting packet online in for the planning board. So every meeting, meeting packet has all the materials. They're they're in SharePoint and they're also in a meeting packet.
Great, thank you so much. And thank you for putting them there. That's, I know it takes a lot of work. Break, yes. Okay.
You don't want to duplicate. You want to duplicate the same thing. Oh, you're trying to pull one one. So. There's. So, yeah.
Okay, great. Get a guy. Okay, great. We're going to reconvene the public hearing for cell signaling technologies. Thank you for the patience once again. You just take three special permits. Thank you. Welcome, Mark Gilofsky.
You're welcome.
And your team. Who should share is. That was.
Matt Conners.
Are you on yet?
Matt, do you want to?
No, no.
Okay, just make sure you sign in without your audio. So any preamble while he's signing?
Not much of a preamble, except for the fact that, as the agenda states, tonight's meeting is for the purpose of. Reviewing civil engineering, stormwater and landscaping as it relates to the cell signaling site. This series of meetings is designed to confirm that we're satisfying the performance standards that are set forth in the zoning by law. So tonight, essentially, we're talking about performance standards that are in sections six point three six, six point three seven and six point three ten. And making the presentation tonight will be Matt Conners behind me again from Hancock Associates. He'll be followed by Josh Wilson, who was a senior ecologist at Biohabitats. And he will explain how his hard work has informed our last speaker, Lynn Geisler. Who will talk about the remarkable landscaping plan for the. Site that is not terribly attractive at the moment. So that's how we're going to proceed and we'll start with Matt.
So Matt, are you on?
Almost.
Oh, there you are. Okay. I think you have your audio on. No, it can't be muted. It has to be joined. So you gotta go to the little carrot by audio. And say join without audio, join by phone. Okay, so you're you're not echoing.
All right, is that better?
Well, he's working on that. Have you received anything from the finance committee?
Have we received it?
Are you still expecting something from the finance?
Yeah, please check in with them.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
She's on. There you go.
Good?
Okay.
I'm Matt Conners, Hancock Associates. So the. Is he there? I'm gonna start off and talk about civil. Some items and Josh is our columnist. We can go online. We can run through some stuff and then we add them to close us out with. So. So I was gonna go through the standards for the special permit. And. There we go. So lighting, we're gonna talk about on the eighth. So I'm not gonna touch on that noise. I'll touch on topographical standards and clearing. Site development standards. Pedestrian vehicle access was talked about at the last meeting on the tenth. Aesthetics is going to be talked about on July eighth. Landscaping, walls, fences. That's going to be Biohabitats in twenty one twelve. And then utilities, security and emergency services, I can touch on that. And fiscal impact we talked about on the tenth. So. Everybody good with what I'm gonna cover?
Except that we may continue to the ninth instead of the eighth. Just we'll we'll make sure we come back.
We get, we. So standard two noise talks about unreasonable impact on neighboring properties. So the interesting thing about this property is there's not a lot of neighbors, but we do intend to have our standard hour of operation in three eight and five. And we would like a waiver for construction to start earlier. And this relates back to the school of impacts we can talk about that relates. So as I said. Don't have a lot of neighbors. Our property is this big chunk of dirt. Our the neighbors to the north is a basically storage facility. And then we have the. Mill Brook and its associated wetland in this area. These guys over here, this is doctor's office. This is the future DPO you say. Are and obviously at the Mac down below, our nearest residential neighbors are here on the other side of one twenty eight. So normal operations. Shouldn't be impacting any of our neighbors. And construction activities shouldn't be. Item three, topographical standards and clearly, this is talking about unnecessary operating altering photography and drainage. Minimizing disturbances in natural habitat ecosystems and providing natural buffers along. Everybody's been to the site. This is our natural habitat. It's a forty. It's been blasted and. All kinds of disturbance. But so photos, this is over where the proposed parking garage is going to be again, it's all disturbed. And this is looking from the top of the cliff. Out over the monuments and the. This is our our neighbor. With this storage. And this is again a top of the cliff looking down like. But you can see it's just a big open disturbed area that we're working. And I think I'm gonna get a little bit into how we're trying to place everything. So that we're not adding to more of this disturbance. Lynn's really gonna touch on that. You got to get just to peek at it with all the. But when you look at. Our disturbed site. This is it. It's this whole piece here. And what we're proposing to do is almost entirely within that area. Looking at it from a larger perspective, again, we have this is our site here. This is our neighbor. This is our other neighbor. And we have not a lot of anybody else in the area. So our natural features, you can see out of the areas that are undisturbed. Throughout. Versus areas that we have disturbed that we're working in.
Okay, before I leave the slide. What is that rectangle parcel that's on the cleared area?
This guy?
Yeah.
So many years ago, well, not many years ago, but years ago, there was a separate parcel here. It has since been combined. This was grabbed from SGIS, which has not been updated to date. But that that rectangle here is absorbed.
I believe it was because the Mac wanted other stuff.
You know more than I about.
I could be wrong.
So. Standard four, site development standards. This gets into talking about preserving and enhancing the natural features of the site. It's in the site design, placement of the buildings, facilities, clearing, pre utility. Placement of buildings. Prevent the impacts to rare endangered species. There aren't and. Sustainability and resilience. Archaeological or historical resources. Again, there aren't any. Preservation of existing vegetation. Then it's gonna really talk about that. Revegetation again. And limit clear. So. Earlier, I showed you the aerial of all the disturbed areas. And this is the site plan and it gets into a little bit of color here. But as far as the overall site. All the zoning buffers are being maintained. No barriers required to the zoning force at all. The area that we're clearing. Is basically, everybody walked this with me the other, when we went to the site, but this ring road here. Was that path that we walked. It's all cleared. It's all disturbed. Up in this area. Even this.
I can barely, I can barely see that cursor.
I will point. So this area up in here, this is is cleared as it's, we walked this is where we're gonna. So this area up in here, this is, is cleared as it's, we walked, this is where we're gonna park here. And even further up in here upstream, it's still disturbed. Outside of that area is in its natural state, we're not touching it. This area here, we're trying to restore back to a normal-ish state. There is a, this whole area down here is gonna be buffered, it's natural trees in there. And then the area within where the majority of our infrastructure is going is basically currently disturbed. So the dark green is basically what is out there right now for natural vegetation. The lighter green. All this is what we're restoring with either plantings or grasses or natives. And then where we have other areas like this is our wetland, this is our basin, this is our, that basin, there was another basin here. And then you see where we have interior landscaping pieces. At the end of the day, there's gonna be more green on the site than there is right now. As far as endangered species or anything of of that nature, the nearest one is up here, here is our site. This is Sommel Brook, this is the wetland, on the other end of the wetland, we have an endangered species. The nearest fertile pool is over here. And up there. Again, nothing's on our site that we're touching. We do have a cold water fishery, that's all Sommel Brook. Don't ask me what species it's from, Michael was very much focused on making sure that it's true in that area or city. But this does impact our stormwater design. So in addition to the cold water fisheries, I'm gonna touch on, I'm gonna come back to that, but the site is, well, the project is gonna be need architecture next week or next two weeks, so we'll talk about that. But our resiliency, our stormwater is being designed for the twenty ninety storm, not the twenty thirty storm.
Yes, which storm in twenty ninety is your design storm, you're gonna get to?
Yes, I'm gonna get that. All of it. So, so nowadays, we're designing for twenty thirty, which is to go, the one year is three inches, the hundred year is nine point two inches. We're doing twenty ninety, which the one year is three point eight inches. A hundred year is seventeen, is, sorry, eleven point seven inches. A hundred year storm is our twenty five year storm. Essentially. So all of our basins are bigger, all of our infrastructure is bigger, all of our TSS design is bigger. When we get into so stormwater is designed to manage that. These areas up here, going down to the basin. This whole piece ends up coming down here and going out to the wetland over here. I have another slide that kind of discusses the TSS subness a little bit more.
Can you make sure you don't use that abbreviation, so total suspended?
Sure. Sorry. If I say empty, you're looking to.
Because people who are watching and people who not in this world.
Yep. So this becomes how we're doing our treatment. We have, we're total suspended salt. So there's a couple of different factors that come into play because we have a cold water fishery, so we have to have forty, forty-four percent of total suspended salts removed from the system before we get to the infiltration base. We also have a parking garage, which has to have a oil water separator. So as we've broken inside of it into a couple of different pieces. This is our parking garage, this is our oil water separator. This parking garage goes through the oil water separator, and then you'll see this basin over here. This basin is lined, it's not an infiltration basin. Everything in this area comes down and goes into the infiltration basin.
Did you say that was aligned basin?
Yes.
Or it's a holding basin?
This area all comes down, comes in here, this overflows into the solid, electric control structure. It's gonna go that way. This piece right here is basically our utility yard. We get a lot of trucks and stuff in there too. Change from this goes into a lot of separating. And it doesn't go this way, it actually goes that way. This building here has roof runoff. We're using the roof runoff for our irrigation system, so there's a so twenty-five thousand gallon tank that gets filled up for roof runoff. And used for irrigation. Whatever doesn't go into the tank, it overflows into the system and heads to that one. We have another little area here, this is primarily grass areas and pedestrian areas. This goes into this main run. And this main run is from, so basically anything on this side of the site has had ample total suspended salt treatment. So it goes down into the infiltration base. Coming over here, we're taking this piece, and this comes down into our planted basin. Again, this one's lined. This all comes down and here goes into that. Base two building clean goes into that piece as well. This overflows into the infiltration basin. This area through here, the one last little area that we couldn't get to go anything relatively easy. So that has its own oil water separator. For total suspended salt treatment, that goes into the infiltration base. That infiltration basin is sized for infiltration for the entire site. Everything from that basin overflows through an only control structure. And that goes into the sweatlands. This all mimics what's going on up there right now for storm.
How much of the runoff of the outside of your scope of work, but MAC and Atwater Ave are also gonna get captured just because of rover land?
So the MAC doesn't drain in our direction at all. It goes to Atwater, Atwater pits. So the MAC is over here, the MAC generally goes in this direction, maybe a little bit of but the majority of the parking.
Just runs off into that brook.
It's either going into the brook or it's going down to Atwater, which will eventually.
Follow that up, so you're not adding any offsite water to your system?
So the MAC is a separate part.
No, I know, but I just, sometimes there's a benefit that. Okay, just a few clarified questions, so it's twenty ninety, twenty-five year storm, that's your design storm?
Yes.
Which is roughly equivalent to today.
Twenty-nine, twenty ninety series of storms.
Yeah.
Are our design storms.
Including up to the one hundred year storm.
Including up to the one hundred year.
Okay, I thought you were saying the twenty-five year storm of twenty ninety was your.
So, so when you design, we're looking at runoff from all this, these, these storm events. So we're sizing our infrastructure based upon what's going on hydraulically with that for those storms. Sometimes we can get away with sizing the utility conduit for the twenty-five year storm, it's actually allowed in your program. It can get funky when you model it, so that some of that stuff bypasses and goes to the next section, so we're getting in that a little bit. When, when this is designed, we basically move towards the right to the hundred year for modeling. There are, I think there's like one catch base so that it backs up a little bit, but it doesn't hit the top, it absolutely hits a hundred year storm. You're a hundred year storm, you get a lot of other things going on.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the question, so you're treating one hundred percent of the water onsite?
Yes.
It's all managed, okay. And then you had said forty-four percent of the total suspended salts were removed before the infiltration basin.
Right, and that's.
And then what's the, coming out of the infiltration to the, do you have?
That's
production.
Out of those numbers off the top, because of a lot of little pieces, but basically we're exceeding mask code.
Okay.
So the forty-four percent before you get to the infiltration is because it's a, it's a large site, it has high traffic volume. So we have to get to that before it gets back in the middle.
Yeah, okay.
And as we move through the site, we have different circumstances, and we have a, we have areas that are grass, they don't typically need that much TSS, because of going on. Sorry, total suspended salt. Then you have parking garages which have a lot of oils runoff and cars, so that's where you wanna put your oil water separator. I answer your question.
Yeah, and then I, so you've got it all into the infiltration basin, on average, you're reducing it by forty-four percent to a low cost. To get to the.
To get to the infiltration, after that, it's in excess of ninety percent.
Ninety percent, okay, great, thank you.
Matt, it's more of a, I'm sitting here thinking that the site is functioning right now, the wetland is there. Function poorly like that, the, however, the water is making it to that wetland somehow.
Yes.
So whatever leaves here, is what you're doing going to increase the flow to the wetland or, or be the same as or, or less?
So what, what state code says is you cannot increase your peak discharge. So what we're doing is we're not increasing our peak discharge. Actually, I would say that most of them are decreased, either marginally or on size and the basis, it's hard to mimic everything exactly. So as we go through the process and we model this, we're, we're running we're running, it's called TIDACAD, we run it so that we're taking the water from these areas based on the storm event that's happening. We routed through everything, it gets to the basin, we're required to infiltrate back into the ground a certain amount. A little bit of fire, there we go, total suspended solids, all these little pieces get tossed into there. And then at the end of the day, we are trying to mimic what's going on right now.
Okay, so I guess long and short of that question is that water that's coming from the new site will be potentially slightly less than the water is making it at their rate now. And a whole lot better treatment, treatment process as it goes along through the system.
Yes, Greg, Greg had some great.
I would say also, as I start to think about that, think about what the plants do for the site, actually, there's so much uptake of water. With new planting, which you have none of now, absolutely none of, so it will, it'll be a very significant transition, which is not part of the modeling.
Correct.
I can, I can share with the team videos of what's happening right now. And because it's all a gravel or, or rock surface, all the water, all the total suspended solids are just running right down Beaver Dam into the wetland. None of that will occur with, with this program.
I, I just have one. As we're talking here, will putting will having less flow into the wetlands be detrimental to the wetlands themselves?
No, it's like I said, we're trying to mimic what's going on there as much as possible. So Greg's got some great videos, but like what's going on with all that runoff coming down, roding everything out, dumping, dumping all that suspended solids back into the well. That does impact. All right, I'm not gonna go into that, but it does impact the wildlife and fish and any other marine mammals.
Suffice to say, it's all recharge, it's the aqua.
Yes, and it all gets, it all gets back into the aquifer, which does affect the water table, which does impact our wildlife.
Okay, I guess that's fault of the, what I was asking about, does, does it, will it dry up? Apparently not, it's all being recharged.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, it's, it's, you're not drying up that well. So it's, again, we're trying to mimic what's going on, and make it better.
Thank you.
I think I just say you're trying to mimic the natural water cycle, because what's going on out there is bare soil and a lot of erosion.
So we're trying to mimic the runoff of what's going on up there in our design, so that we're not increasing it or decreasing it, there is some marginal.
You're reducing the rate of runoff.
You, you were there on the sidewalk, you remember walking down Beaver Dam Road, and you could see where those big bruggles have formed. All of that dumps into the well. Okay. Item eight, utilities, security, emergency search. So this talks about adequate service provided for wastewater, water, site security, underground utilities required. So the site is served by water, so anything in blue on the side screen is water, maybe green. Water is being supplied from the bottom of the screen here. As well as sewers, so the water is an eight inch line that comes up, loops everything, all these blue circles are hydrants. I just didn't work through with the chief. Our fire engineer has gone through extensive modeling, to make sure that everything works according to it. Water comes down through here, this is the MAC over here. There's a little wetland here, but when you go down here, you have one twenty-eight. Underneath one twenty-eight is an eighteen inch conduit and a twenty-four inch conduit. They were, to the best of our knowledge, put in place there so that you could get utilities underneath one twenty-eight without opening up. Those conduits right now, the eighteen inch contains water for the MAC. It contains two, I believe they're five inch conduits, one of them is empty, and the other one is for communications. The twenty-four inches, so we are running our force lane or sewer to that twenty-four inch down the other side to Mill Street. And this has been worked through with DPW, it's part of the utility improvement package that was put out and bid a couple of weeks ago. The sewer force lane goes to Mill, goes to Forest, it ties into the sewer system. The water is already on Mill, so we're tying into it. Because it's already on, so it comes up and shrugs. Any questions on water and sewer?
So what's the last thing you just said about the waters already, the last thing you just said, I was writing something.
So, so the water system is on Mill Street, it's an eight inch, so since on Mill Street we're tying it as well, it's already on, I'm already on the site, so we're tying into it for that. There's also some water improvement work going on, on Forest Street, that means going in with twelve inch, and then School Street is also part of this project. There's main improvements going from right about where Essex, the Essex Country Club is up to almost one twenty-eight. So that's part of this, so that creates a loop with more volume for this.
Thanks.
So this gas and electric, this is still being worked through to get everything to the site. But essentially, Atwater Ave is gonna be supplying electric and gas for the project. Gas is gonna come in and pass two service connections, one to reach the building bases. And electric has, it's all underground, for electric, it comes in, it ties into switchgear, which is this chunk right here comes into the building, it also comes down underneath the drive as more switchgear and a generator. There's also a generator today. And then fire services, we did a turning movement analysis for the entire site. We did it for fire, it was also done for tractor trailers, because they're a little bit bigger. And we will be getting tractor trailers on the site, so, but essentially you can see where it comes down to Atwater, we can surround the entire site very clearly. There is a turnoff that's pulled in here to allow for the tractor trailer to, not necessarily back in, but if there's a There is a turnoff that's pulled in here to allow for the tractor trailer to, not necessarily back in, but if there's a. Trailer, if there's no space, that it does have a place to pull up, so it's not in that drive out, creating a safety hazard.
Has the fire chief seen this?
Yes.
Do we have any communication from him, Mark?
No.
Can we just follow? They've submitted it to. So we get any comments, written comments?
So there's a, it's also a technology security plan. This was based on Trask Lane and Tozer Road. So it's, it's something that is in use right now. It's based on their own facilities. So it's. It's been submitted as part of this package to the planning board. It's also been submitted to the police department and the fire department.
I have a question back on utilities. Sure. Two questions. What is, are you, are you, three questions. Do you have demand response? Are you doing demand response generate? You.
Not sure yet.
Not sure. Okay, just for the low regionally, it's a good thing. Are you gonna do solar?
Yep, the entire parking garage is gonna get covered.
So it's all rooftop?
Yep.
Okay, so no ground mounted.
Okay.
And then the third thing on utilities is. The geothermal is again located, it just wells, but can you just show us on the plan, since it is a utility, it is here?
So to see these shaded areas. This is where our geothermal fields are gonna be. They're not totally flushed out at this present time, but. Depending on, so page one is gonna be going with phase one, which includes this area, and then phase two is gonna be this area. That coordination of that is still ongoing and the actual layout is still ongoing, but.
Are those overlapping with your detention bases?
Yeah, but they're six feet underground. Detention bases, no. So this is, this is a screening room.
Okay.
So basically, this area is getting built up. And this area is on this side of the basin.
And I, I know you're the answer, but just, these are closed loop. Have a question on the utility plant. Do you have generators on the site and where in elevation are those located?
Want to talk about them?
Yeah, we do have two. Phase one is here and we'll show you a section of how, these are like a school bus. You know, they're not insignificant size wise. We'll show you a section of how we're screening that. Phase two is here and all of this vegetation is gonna be underground when it works. So that's to remain. We get to the phase two piece, that phase two plant, it will be doing something similar, heavily planting around that. So. That's us there, that's us there.
Excellent. And in terms of the resiliency, are you, the elevation of the generators or not rooftop generators?
Not rooftop. There's a section that really displays what's going on, but no, they're, they're on the ground.
Yeah.
We're actually sinking them in a little bit to try to hide them.
And the switchgear elevation is.
Calm off it as well.
Yeah. It is, it is ground mounted. I see what you're, you guys are getting at, like happy. Yeah. I think from the way, we haven't worried about that from the elevation standpoint. It has something that's been driving us to get that one higher. I guess the larger question is, is there a risk that in that twenty ninety storm event? That the wetland surface water comes higher? What's that elevation of? Yeah, what are the elevations?
So, so that well is in the five hundred year stone. Is, does not come out of the back. And then, so when you go from atwater here. Atwater here, up the hill, you've got above forty to sixty for the elevation.
Which is, I think, part of the reason why we're also not taking on adjacent properties into our. We're higher than everybody else.
Except, and you're burying all the electrical, so no poles.
We have some lights which are.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, can you go back to the noise for a minute, way back when we started, because you said that there'd be. No one on the other side of one twenty eight will be impacted by a construction, with the exception, I assume, of the blasting.
So that's a construction activity. Do you want, do you want to touch on that? Do you want me to just run with this? So during construction, we're gonna have blasting. It's gonna be a couple of months of work that's going on. The blasting piece of it is about a minute every day or two. The hammering takes a little bit longer, where you're gonna hear da, da, da. But we have no neighbors. Our nearest neighbor is. He's a residential. So you have one twenty eight, which comes up about forty feet. Here, comes across, and then this ridge line pops up even further. So there's a big pocket between. Operating between those residential property. Majority of the blasting is on this side of the flip face. So even that portion is getting pushed away.
And then, just sorry, and so all the blasting for both phases will be done.
So it's a, as well as it's an annoyance, we're trying to get it done all at once. It's also safer. To get all the blasting taken care of, where there's no buildings in the city.
Okay, and then the other thing that was on your first slide was the hours of of construction. So that is in the general bylaw, section forty five.
I understand.
And it details specific activities that have to occur at eight AM. And you have to go, not a special permit or anything, just to the board of segment, like board, or. For any modification of those hours. So you don't have to come to us.
I, I, I think that it's, the hours are set forth in your performance standards. And I believe that it also specifically states that you have the right to waive those, any, any portion of those. So we will be making a request. At the appropriate time to allow for construction activity to start six thirty in the morning as opposed to eight. And, and the primary reason for that is to get all the trucks on site before school buses and school traffic.
I think the issue is that the operation of heavy equipment, I think that, I was worried about that pavement breakers, pile drivers. And blasting, doesn't say unlasting, but I think you can infer blasting eight to six. So I think it's the pile drivers. And I know. This was in direct response to the year long pile driving at six AM. Everybody could hear all over town about a particular project.
What are?
So I think that's the, that's the one that's gonna be a little bit harder. I think it'll be very, you just need to be specific exactly about what you want.
Yeah, we can, we can come up with very specific. Our thought was, if we can get in there, because you guys are very concerned with Essex coming.
Yeah.
All the school kids coming through, but if we can get in there before they're there. We don't impact their travel schedule. They can get going. We can come up with a. Activity schedule based on, you know, what's gonna happen at what time.
Yeah, I think we can probably foresee that's pile driving at six AM is gonna be.
I don't, I don't see that being happening, but I understand where you're coming from.
Two things. The hours were first thought of as traffic mitigation.
And that makes sense.
And then in discussing the MAC, I've had a number of meetings with them and their programming. And where blasting worked well in their programming. We're looking at trying to to set up a blast made above nine o'clock in the morning. In order to facilitate that, we could have to start earlier than eight, make it safe. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at a six thirty start. And I will check with the, the last tenant. Because his noise activity was crushing in same operations that we would be acting performing. To see what his, his level of noise was. I, I don't think it's gonna be a lot different. But Matt is correct. It's, the blasting really is not a, a noise impact as much as a percussion impact. It's really the drilling that is going to be continuous for a, a, a number of months. So we, we can play that one by ear. But it's more of a safety consideration, traffic consideration more than.
Okay, I think it would just be specific about what you need, but I think it's that percussive. Noise of six seven one.
We've all heard.
Yeah, but I think it's also a great idea to be off, getting your folks not to interfere with the school traffics. That's great.
I'm done with my presentation. Anybody have questions on this?
Sue or Chris, any questions? Wes, Wes and Sam say, comments on this part?
Up to you how we present. We're gonna present our comments and go, it's open on different topics.
Okay.
Sequentially.
Otherwise, just do it at the end then. Okay, that's fine. Great.
So I believe Josh is online.
Hi, everybody. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't be there. And, but I'm happy to, happy to be here virtually and to present. Essentially, the ecological assessment that we Biohabitats did. For cell signaling technology and for the project in the site. And really to, to really help, help the, the team understand the site as it is right now ecologically. And where it could be. You know, Biohabitats, so for myself, I'm a. A senior ecologist, restoration ecologist with Biohabitats, about twenty five years of experience. Doing everything, wetland delineations through permitting, both federal and state Massachusetts. So. In Biohabitats, we're an ecological planning firm. And really, our mission. We're driven to restore the earth and to inspire ecological stewardship. So really, when we were brought on board, next slide, please. We were brought on board, really was to help the team bring an ecological planning aspect to the overall planning and design process. So I'm not gonna read every word on this, but basically looking at the landscape context of the site. What's going on ecologically, the networks, natural resources. Really establish the planning foundations to, to ensure that ecological systems are not degraded. But are, in fact, are actually, are actually improved and really increasing ecological functions and ecological services. And really, again, it's not a means to an end, but it's a foundation. We're really looking at trying to pull together all the information that goes into the biophysical. Aspects of, of a site and, and bring it, bring it to bear on the landscape design. And as well as all the other aspects of the project of stormwater, et cetera. Next slide, please. So just, I'll, this, a lot of this information was in our report. You're probably familiar with it. So I'm gonna kind of go through it relatively quickly, but obviously, if you have questions, stop me. But this all should be relatively familiar. So really, the site, which is in the lower right quadrant of this. This figure, image is within the Gulf of Maine coastal lowland. It's a biophysical region of Maine and Massachusetts. That extends along the Atlantic coast. It is part of the Greater Eastern Broadleaf Forest Province and Lower New England Ecoregion section. So these things you probably are, are familiar with in the region. Obviously, we know with the heat, it gets hot in the summer and cold in the winters. And the topography at this site, which actually shows up on our next slide, is pretty, is pretty variable. So we're located in a coastal plain physiography, a lot of glacial activity. And that glacial activity was also affected by the existing bedrock, hence the, the mining services and the quarry services. That have, activities that have happened on this site. And so really, the thin glacial till, but really a lot of bedrock on the site. And then glacial till in the uplands and the lowlands, or the valleys, really a lot of outwash deposits. So you have, you have some, some really nice. Wetland areas, like those associated with Sawmill Brook. Next slide, please. Then we, with regard to the watershed, we're in the north coastal sub-basin. And really, the Cape and Chubb Point to Castle Neck watershed, it really drains, the site drains to Sawmill Brook. Which then joins with Cat Brook to form Little Pine Island Creek. And then ultimately discharging into the Massachusetts Bay, northern part of Massachusetts Bay. And then, as, as Matt mentioned before, Sawmill Brook is classified as a cold water fishery habitat. It actually contains native brook trout in it. And that's one of the reasons why it's important that it's the, the temperature be regulated and protected. The site is also along the Atlantic flyway, flyway. So a lot of bird migration occurring. Of over and through the site. Several dozen migratory birds use this flyway, including songbird, songbirds, shorebirds. Ducks and raptors. So you really have a, you know, a great opportunity for not only, not only species to nest. And use the sites, site in the adjacent area, surrounding area, but also to pass through during the fall and the spring. So a lot of opportunities, and I think that's recognized. And you'll see later as I get through the actual habitat. Which is here. So our, our land, next, next slide, please. So that's the land cover and land use on the site. You can see that the site is, everything north is just north of Route. One twenty eight, and it's, everything is largely for it except for the site. And that forested area is really continuous tracks of forested upland with forested and non-forested freshwater wetlands. So, so really, a lot of continuous, continuous forest land through this area. And it's further refined when we looked at what Matt showed on the next, which is shown on the next slide. Of the map Protected and Ecological Habitats. So again, Sawmill Brook is the only map Protected Ecological Habitat on site. It runs, and which is basically on the edge of the western edge of the site. But there are, you know, nearby protected ecological habitats for endangered species and certified rental pools. But again, not on, not on site. And in fact, the really nearby important ecological habitats are further to the north. Where you have a significant amount of core forest, meaning that it's unfragmented. Which provides, which are probably the improved habitats to, to certain songbirds that, that don't like fragmented woodland. And then also, you can see there's also some critical vernal pool upland, which basically is areas where vernal pool connectivity. And that's, you can see that up in the north, sort of north and east of the, of the site. Next slide, please. And again, I think this is, this all is recognized in the region by just the extensive protect and open space and conservation land. And how important it is to protect these continuous forests and, and minimize the amount of fragmentation in them. And so there is ownership within a mile of the site. There's ownership by fourteen separate entities. And it's a significant amount of, of open space that helps conserve continuous tracks of, of wildlife habitat. For, for migration and diversity. And next slide, please. I think the site topography itself helps, helps understand some of the ecology of the site. So the topography is basically broken into two parts. The western two thirds is sort of developed and managed portions. While the eastern third is more native and naturalized. The eastern oil, null, actually adjoins and extends what's currently associated with protected habitat or opens. Protected open space to the, to the east and to the north. And actually, it's, it's, it's very similar in terms of, in terms of its general habitat. And vegetation assemblages and, and diversity. So the next slide here is, wanna just talk about the assessed communities and the, the eco types that we've, we went through. We looked at developed and managed areas, upland areas and wetlands. So. I'll just jump right into some of the up, the developed and managed is what it is. I mean, Matt talked a lot about that. I think you're familiar, all familiar with that. So I'm not going to spend any time other than that. It's really not a lot of habitat available in those areas. Really, the habitat, the habitat comes when we looked at some of the areas that have remained, remained foul. Fallow, not foul, fallow, and, and also, you know, generally had light management activity on it. So the first is a dry, disturbed dry meadow community. These are areas that are most recently been disturbed and allowed to just revegetate. It's a mix of ruderal weeds, native dry meadow species, which are common at disturbed sites. Ragweed, tansy, goldenrod, barnyard grass, queen Anne's lace. We also see, start to see some invasives coming in like mugwort in that area. Adjacent to these disturbed meadows, next slide, please, are some of the disturbed wet meadows. These are very similar to the dry meadows. Um, the difference, they're not wetlands, but they are, there is more of a saturated condition of longer duration of um, water sitting on them. So the wetter conditions at this location, they, they're predominantly from surface drainage. Um, and lead to a similar, but a little bit more diverse assemblage of herbaceous species and mixed shrubs starting to come in. Um, a lot of those species are like, um, are, are actually become uh, some of the non-natives, uh, invasive ones such as common reed or fragmites. Purple loostreif, Japanese knotweed. Um, we see, start to see Tree of Heaven and multiflora rodina, Asiatic visiting, which we, Oriental Bittersweet starting to come in. Um, as, as mowing is really decreased and these woody species are allowed to, to flourish a little more. Next slide, please. And then the third sort of uh, area that we see in this, in these early undisturbed areas or early succession or scrub shop species. Um, these actually, we, we observed have a lot more of the native species um, coming in. But this, they're generally younger individuals of that early successional series, uh, species that we would see. Um, you know, such as uh, gray birch or quaking aspen. But you start to see some, some of the more long-term second layer of species or second succession of species, which is some of the oaks and such. Uh, next slide, please. Which then kind of is derived from the adjacent area to the, to the east and north, or the east of the, uh, eastern side of the site. Um, and that's really the forest community of a hemlock, beach, mixed oak forest complex. And this is an extension of, again, the areas offsite to the north and east. Um, it's, it's an eco tone that's basically on this particular site, um, uh, is adjacent. It's uh, it consists largely of red oak, black oak, scarlet oak, um, as well as hemlock and beaches. Um, unfortunately, uh, like a lot of areas, our forests are sort of impacted um, by several diseases or, or parasites. Um, hemlocks, as you know, have the woolly deluge and that's been dealing with that for some time. Uh, and the, and the beaches, um, longer term, we've seen beach bark disease, but in the, or shorter term, we're starting to see beach leaf disease take its toll on a lot of beach trees. So um, while the hemlocks and the beaches are able to provide a lot of shade on the interior forest and canopy. There is some, some loss of that, of those species um, gradually because of these parasites. So um, what happens is those interior forests are gonna see a transition. Um, not just, not in this site specifically, but across New England and actually the whole, the northeast in general. Where you'll see a lot more light penetration, a lot more stuff coming, uh, other species starting to come through. But as of right now, these are the species that, that are there. Um, so understory species that we will see come through are things like low bush blueberry or witch hazel. Um, we also see smaller species such as tea barrier or sunflower, Canada mayflower and, and ghost pipe throughout the, this area. Um, within that hemlock beach mixed oak forest complex, next slide, please. Um, is sort of a subset to the area, which is a, which is an open hardwood woodland. Uh, this is an area within the forest complex that's more open savanna-like, I'd see, we'd say at the summit of a hillside. Um, and the community, and community is similar to canopy with the oaks and hemlock, uh, you do start to see some pines in there. But the understory is a lot more densely populated with um, with smaller trees like hop hornbeam, or you might see things like huckleberry, viburnum, et cetera. Um, all these types of things, um, provide uh, different types of varying habitat for, for species. Again, more interior type of, of forest habitat, similar to what's, what's offsite. And then next uh, slide, please. Um, the mixed forest pockets and, and the highway edge is another eco type that we were, we observed. And this is really the stuff that's on the edges. Um, things that had been disturbed long ago, maybe when the whole site was cleared. Um, have it had a chance to regenerate. Uh, they're along the, they're along the highway. So there's, there's some um, salt spray and, and, and other activity that's, that's happening, that's basically affecting the uh, the growth in those areas. But these are, um, again, uh, beach hemlock oak, but also you start to see some more red maple. Um, with a more monolithally dense understory uh, of red maple, huckleberry, witch hazel, et cetera. Uh, but you do also because of the amount of disturbance and the amount of um, edge that's there. You start to see more of, uh, more invasives such as um, oriental bittersweet or glossy buckthorn or honeysuckle bush and vine. And then our last area, um, covered, I sort of grouped all these together, but as for the wetland areas. And these are really on the periphery. I mean, two, the, two larger ones are on the periphery. So you have Sawmill Brook on the, on the west, uh, which we talked about before. And then, uh, which really receives a lot of, uh, receives its, its cold water. Um, fishery designation because there is um, a lot of forest around it. Um, a lot of wetlands that are able to detain the water and cool it, but also groundwater discharge that hits into the stream and supports those cold water fisheries. Um, and then on the eastern side of the property is, you know, is a wetland that was flagged, but extends further off to the, um, to the east. To the east and that, and both of these sort of are largely a red maple assemblage of uh, forest. With some sweet pepper, sweet pepper bush, high bush, blueberry, um, uh, sweet birch underneath cinnamon fern. So that type of, that type of, of community in there. And really, the, so as we talked about in these assessed communities, next slide, please. Um, we, we really use these communities as the inspiration for the, the planned landscape design. Um, we want to draw strongly from the native species and the communities that are, that are um, on the site. But really that are adjacent to the site as well, uh, pulling from, pulling from that eastern third of the site. We really want to understand, you know, what's, what habitats are available, what species are there. And really, how can we connect the ecology um, of the surrounding site to the human needs and the uses on the site? Um, and really try to find the balance between the two. Uh, this connection, connection is intended to increase genetic diversity um, of both wildlife species as well as vegetation species. Uh, we can really only control the vegetation species, uh, and what we plant. But um, those, those species that we bring in then encourage certain wildlife to use it. Uh, given the type of, the type of structure and the type of, um, the type of mast or fruits that those types of species produce. Wildlife noted on site include, really include typical suburban and assimilated mammal species like whitetail deer. Um, to a certain extent coyote and bobcat, which are becoming a lot more common. Um, and um, derring has, as we, as their populations grow. And then raccoons and squirrels, um, you know, throughout the site, opossum, et cetera. So I really, a lot of the species that we'd see there, avian species that we're seeing, um, are also generally forest edge species. Um, like American crow, robin or black cat chickadee. You might see some, some more slightly interior species like the wood thrush uh, on the site. Um, and then obviously coastal species, if you go out to the site and the back site, you see a lot of, a lot of gulls um, that are in the area, which are obviously. Because we're close to the ocean, there's gonna be quite a few hearing bells and blackback gulls. So really, um, again, the idea that, you know, we wanted to work with, with cell signaling like technology in the team is to, is to really bring to bear this, the ecological quality. Um, of the area that surrounds the site and really draw that, that um, ecological diversity uh, to the site. And provide some ecological uplift, um, by, by establishing uh, native and natural communities on site. Um, that can support the wildlife that, that is around the site and in those core habitats. So that's the gist of, I wanted, what I wanted to share with you all. Um, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that might have been quick, a little quick, but hopefully that, that helps you understand where, where maybe what Lynn was gonna, is gonna talk about. And where she, where she goes. Thank you.
I, I, it was a great presentation, Josh. Uh, thank you. I'm really excited that. The team is taking this ecological diversity approach to the site. So I think it's. Really an incredible opportunity and I'm, I'm very excited about this approach. But I have a few questions, um, just to dig in a little more. Are there some key species that you're managing for that might be more interior and less edge species? Um, and are you trying to create corridors for them or what you're thinking on, how do you kind of measure success here? And how do you uh, plan corridors or patches or whatever the, whatever the approach might be?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that um, trying to minimize the amount of, first of all, minimize any uh, fragmentation on the edges. Um, and really getting some of those interior species. And when we think of interior species, a lot of times we're talking about, about birds, um, as, as our interior species. Um, so you know, like I said, wood thrush, even hermit thrushes can, can thrive in these areas. Uh, and basically, I don't think that we can, we can expect to have, um, we can expect to have the, the species. Interior species thrive in this, on the site because it's not going to be an interior habitat. Um, but I think being able to uh, provide, provide the, the migration, the movement pathways through the site. Uh, without having to cross through open fields and such, um, you know, I think that that's for more of the mammalian species. Um, I think that's probably gonna be critical. So I think that part of the design approach, uh, working with, with, um, with Lynn is just to, to make sure that we provide. Enough density of vegetation, um, enough natural vegetation that, that, that those, those pathways are, exist and they might, they can migrate through it.
Creating corridors first.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, thank you. A couple, a few more questions. Um, in terms of the management over time, and I know you're talking about, you know, first day design today, but you've got a different, several different landscape type typologies. Some of them are successional and you have knotweed and other pretty nasty invasives. So is there a thought about managing, you know, mowing, uh, inputs to these various kinds of landscapes? Is there an O and M plan being created?
It will be in the process. We've been talking to cells like, we don't have it yet.
Yeah.
It's absolutely part of it. I mean, the, the invasives that are out there are no joke at me. To our benefit will be, you'll see, I mean, much of it is open now, but we will be clearing a lot and then, you know, planting. So, right.
Yeah, some of the bases by excavation.
Right. And some of the soil that's due, then we start to put the soil, um, plan will kind of help with some of that because some places.
Yeah, that was my next question when you're anticipating it. So talk a little more about how the soils plan maps to these kind of different landscape type qualities.
Do you want me to go, right? Because it's part of the, our presentation. I'm happy to get into it.
Yeah, let me um, just see if there's anything else for Josh before I get into that. Um, so before, I think last two for Josh, one is related to the thermal um, stormwater pollution management. And, you know, do you have a point of view, Josh, on the kind of um. Uh, landscape-based treatments and their contribution to, to reduction of thermal pollution? Because you said this is a cold water species.
Yeah, I think, I think that this was spoken earlier too. Um, and I think that, you know, whatever is going, is being proposed is, is going to be better than what's there now. Um, a vegetated, um, a vegetated system, especially with natural and native uh, vegetation. It's really going to uh, increase evapotranspiration, um, so water uptake. Um, the soils will also, uh, will also hold more of that, that water and allow it to infiltrate as well as the, the detention basins and retention, infiltration basins that are there. So I think all those in, together combined, um, will be a vast improvement on, on the water quality in terms of, in terms of temperature. And therefore the protection of, of Sawmill Creek and the cold water fishery.
Great. And my last question for Josh, I know we're not talking about site lighting tonight, but I wonder if Josh will be taking a look at the plan and thinking about any kind of wildlife impacts. Or if there, if you say dark sky and that's enough, or can you just speak to the impacts of site lighting on wildlife?
I mean, I haven't, I haven't um, looked at the, the site lighting. Um, I think that, um, so I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
We can talk about that one.
Okay.
The lighting positionals, but just to that point, I think what we're trying to do is balance the programmatic needs, right? Up beside, everything is lead compliant. Where is the dark sky? And so, um, you know, if, it's, it's, if we had more space, we'd say, here's the corridor that's not lit. But I think because the ring road is really the definition. So I think it's, it's that balance. I think we're trying to hit the, the lighting is being worked on in a very um, kind of rigorous and delicate way. So that it's just enough for safety of, you know, human beings out there, but it will be lights, you know, so. It might affect that. But I think when we start to, we can pull up the plan, when we look at our edges where we're really buffering things like heavily.
Yeah.
We do have a lot of space where it's not programmed.
Right.
And so, you know, for me, I'm gonna support some of this kind of improvement and helps out. The beautiful thing about the site is that. We're do, what we're doing is gonna be an improvement no matter what, which is, which is great, but we do want to do it in the most thoughtful way.
Right.
Um, do you want me to just?
Yeah.
Other questions for Josh?
Anybody else have questions for Josh?
He'll stay on, so I'm sure. Um. So I think folks have seen the plan. We can talk a bit about, you know, there's a lot of different programmed elements that we have in the exterior for the landscape pieces. And um, I'm gonna go through some of the specific comments that we had from the Western San San team that do relate to landscape. But it's always folded back to the way we've been working with Josh and the rest of the team. So you'll see certain um, uh, labels here with berm screening meadow. Some of this is the way we've designed the site to work programmatically based on what we're seeing. So just for example, we're not trying to do, you know, big trees in a meadow location where we know existing soils are very thin. Our soils plan is extensive and expensive. That's one thing. We know that we have to do a lot of that here, but we're just trying to be very wise about how to go through that process and listen to the site. And have it tell us already what's doing well there and then how we can come in and kind of beef that up. I'll go forward, but we can always come back to many of these elements. We did just want to put in this plan, I think, uh, at one point we'd submitted this supplemental material, but what is it gonna look like during phase one? So just as a reminder to everybody, this is the intended phase one plan. Um, as Greg was talking about earlier, all the blasting for phase two will occur at this time. And then we've kind of worked very hard to say, what is this gonna look like, you know, for this amount of time? We want to be judicious about not planting a lot of things here that we know we're gonna need to have to rip out. So the idea of this meadow, this is part of our grassland habitat. You'll see a diagram that shows that and that. Um, that happens here in a really kind of beautiful passive way, but this from the lobby and all this will be very open again. This is the thinner area of existing disturbed meadow, thinner soils. We're at, um, terracing the actual hillside. So we're gonna try to get some planting in some of the flat areas of the terraces because we know it'll be there for a little bit. And then uh, more vegetation down at the bottom. So we're kind of surgically working through what can we do here for phase two in minimize the amount of disturbance then that we'll have to do when we, when we actually construct that. But what's beautiful about this one area is that at the, at the top of the um, quarry wall here. All of this existing vegetation, we do not have to touch. And that's really, we're really looking for chances where there's quality vegetation on the site. That has a broader scale to it that we don't have to touch. And this is one of those kind of key moments. This is as well. You'll see other drawings. Those are the ones. And um, so that's really important to us as we're going through. So one of the questions that we had in section four point six was the preservation of existing vegetation. This diagram was submitted, but just to step us through. Um, what we see here in the magenta, these are areas where we've located that the vegetation can divide. This is that big swath I was just talking about in this piece. There's actually like a little chunk, a bunch of screen, at the face of the quarry piece there, we're really trying to keep as much as we can. Um, it's fairly low. It's not big trees. We want to make sure that this view is maintained. But if we can keep that, it actually provides a nice buffer to portions of the edge. It's not consistent. Some of these things are, you know, not uh, high quality vegetation as, as we've discussed. But in the lighter tan, there are some square footages of trees that we will have to remove to, in order to construct the project. And then the darker brown, there's um, brush understory. So it's already disturbed. We're not removing a lot of additional material. What we are doing is proposing a very significant amount of this. And, and we're just highlighting in the light green the trees that we're putting in the site in addition. And then everything else is gonna be green on the ground thing. So we're excited about the transformation that that will provide. Um, tree protection, this was one of the questions. I just wanted, we, we did submit the responses, but just so everybody here knows that. The tree protection fencing will be, this is our standard specification, six foot high chain link fencing at the drip line of the tree. the tree protection fencing will be, this is our standard specification, six foot high chain link fencing at the drip line of the trees. Um, so that nobody can get in there and like hang out in the shade and park in the shade and all of that. So we're very serious. We know there's not a lot of trees that we can keep on site, so we want to make sure that we're doing all the right things during construction period and we is wonderful about that. And then if there are particular things that need to be done to the existing trees, that it will be done by certified arborists. So that's part of our specifications that will be adopted in the construction documents. Um, you have wonderful requirements about soil in your, your uh phyla. So that's really fascinating to me in particular, but what we start to see is that we've identified the locations based on the diagram that you'll see forthcoming of the uh typologies. I think the big thing that, the big one here that I just wanted to talk about is this, like the, like the east thirty, this is a very disturbed portion of the site. It is not part of phase one or phase two construction, but we know we need to do something to it. Uh, I think we're getting out there and doing some regrading and things now. In order to, the soil depth out here is extensive that we would have to provide in order to do a six inch soil depth. If we do four, we're pretty confident we can get a seed mix to grow on four and at least stabilize this as part of the project. So that's the one thing where we're kind of saying in your specifications says, you know, we need six inches minimum. This is one location we're saying we can just do four, that would be beneficial because it is a huge amount of area. And we are, you know, able to hit it, I think, with a pretty extensive um erosion control, dry seed mix that will, and then let them duke it out kind of thing over time. So that it will stabilize that area and reduce our erosion.
So that's the natural, the upland grassland that you're talking about, that soil or what?
No, this is, I mean, our focus for design is really here.
Sure.
This is one of those like, oh god, we have to do that too kind of thing that's out there. And so this would just be um a part of that, you know, let's get some soil in there and just take that with a seed mix.
The hydro seed?
Yeah. Okay. Probably gonna be one of those, you know.
Metal mixes or some?
Metal mixes that's good for, you know, erosion control, quick germination and uh, you know, duration over time. So it'll be a bit. It'll actually be probably like pollinators same point. This is a big open field, really cool. Um, but this is something that is just not part from the designs portion of, of this part of the project. So that's the reasoning for, was it for an easier soil in that location as opposed to six? Yes, in, in the permanent established areas close proximity to the building. Um, minimum of six inches of soil, even for the like grassland habitats that we're talking about. Irrigation did come up. We are proposing irrigation on the project for establishment. That's a big piece. We're investing a ton of money in the new plant material and we need it to be successful for all of us, you know, for the whole project to be successful. So as part of, and I think you will see that we're choosing the right native plant material to survive here. But getting it established is, is very critical. Um, and so we do have uh, as, as was mentioned earlier, um, our mangwater harvesting system. Um, Greg and I were going back and forth. I said twenty five thousand. I thought it was twenty five thousand. He thinks it's twenty thousand. Somewhere in there, we've sized the tank appropriately to meet weed requirements and the areas that we need to irrigate. It will also be collecting root runoff, condensate and um reverse osmosis water. So, which they do currently at, um, at their facilities. So we have a great amount of resources for that tank, which is.
Is that enough to meet the demand? Not that you wanna use potable water, but in a drought.
Yeah, we're trying to size and saying, okay, in a drought, we're gonna irrigate the prime areas, which is like where they, where they would have most um activity, you know, it's like the, the kind of front, you know, this now. This is just gonna have to deal on the very edges. Um, so we've gone back and forth. It's, it's, we're looking to size it appropriately. Have it meet the cost and then, you know, kind of work with the the primary areas that we're looking to irrigate also, which you can see um as we get to some of the other ones. But I think the areas on the edges we're gonna get them up and running and then say, you know.
Do you establish, do you provide irrigation for those over the establishment period as well?
Yes, exactly. So the establishment, the establishment period, it might be a draw a little bit.
Yeah.
So I think that's what we're trying to go back and forth and figure out the right way. But it is, yeah, for this is.
Walk away from it.
You know, exactly, correct. So, but the goal is that irrigation will not be from the municipal water. Um, and that it is in compliance with the heat certification. So now I'm gonna jump into seeing how um Josh and, and our work has really dovetailed. So just in zooming in here and reiterating some of the landscape typologies that he identified, just notice disturbed, disturbed, like early succession, everything out there, as you know, is heavily disturbed. So um, these areas in the kind of higher part at the, the top of the quarry very thin soils. That's what we're seeing there. They're disturbed. We have dry meadows coming in. We have a little bit of wet meadow coming in, but it's just telling us that that soil depth right now can't support other things, at least not quite yet. Um, the early successional areas that we were talking about, some of these pieces um, saying maybe it's a little less disturbed, other elements are coming in, but what we're really focusing are primary hole for the actual landscape, the planting palette is filling. These are more established areas. Sadly, not using hemlock or beet um at all. It's just unfortunate, but not the most um appropriate thing to do here. So Sonal look is really kind of off of the property, but as Matt mentioned, we do have um detention areas and uh rain gardens that we're gonna be pulling some of that kind of plant typologist from. So here's how we've organized the site with a lot of different um typologies that we've said, these are the things that are really gonna drive how we're gonna plant and make the decisions about planting there. I just, in number one, I think this, these areas are the ones that are mostly pulled from here with more diversity. The screening priorities are key and you'll, we'll have diagrams about this, but this berm, super key. These areas, this is where the generator is, that's very key for larger plant material from day one. And then this area down here. So this is where we're spending a lot of the money early on. Whereas, you know, some of these areas with the backside of the garage, we can put in woodland restoration, we can put in five foot evergreens, you know, and have them, it's a steep slope. And just say the smaller they are in those particular conditions, the better they will actually adapt over time. So identifying some of the primary goals and a few other places is really helping us with our planting over quite an extensive site. Um, I do wanna highlight number seven, we'll, we'll, over time, we'll figure out how big that really wants to be, but we do have the idea of doing a little nursery out here. We could plant smaller things that then could get transplanted for phase two. So and even have it like a, a test thing. It's, it's a bunch of scientists in the building, so they're really gonna do it. So cool. Um, and number eight, we also know that there's uh, it's, it's doing the grassland habitat, but they also have a program of um raised garden beds and stuff. So for them, for the, for the folks there, that's a wonderful amenity. Um, we only have number twelve, tiny little pieces of lawn, but this is like a micro clover lawn. Programmatically, this is a really nice spot for folks from the building to come out. That's like the one open green space around with a walking loop. And then in the basins, we know at number nine, um, has to be all perennials vegetation, so they can kind of mow it, get in there and mow periodically. But then in number ten, we have more opportunities to do bigger rain garden kind of moves. So um, you do have the plant list. It's a big palette. And you know, when we start to get into CDs, we'll say, we're gonna pull from these things, but the team collectively so far has worked on what is the right palette. It's actually been for a landscape architect, it's been super fun to go back and forth with Josh and Josh's like, how about this? I'm like, okay, great. How about this? And some of them, um are great. We'll be working with the contractor because some native things are less commercially available. So that's another thing, but there are commercial nurseries out there that will supply some of these street species that will do well in these conditions. So um, planting wise, it's gonna be super fascinating, I think, for all of us to kind of watch the process as we go. This gives you just a sense, this is what we shared, Liz CST driving a lot of our ideas. What we're, what we're talking about when we say naturalized berm, something more heavily planted. Successional woodland, you get low kind of perennials, some scrub, and then you get into larger trees. Um, some of these elements that are just bigger looser grasses, wet meadow, lots of pollinators. So this is, if we can bring the pollinators in and the birds, you know, and some of these other places, that would be really amazing. And I think everyone would be very happy about, but this should give the sense of what those typologies mean when we're talking about them. And then the areas that I mentioned previously, I think the last hearing, people were saying, well, how big are things gonna be when they go in? And I said, we're gonna spend our money in certain places. And these two images highlight where the big trees will be going in. So this is on the north side. And then this next one, this is just screening from one twenty eight. So to give a sense, and people are like, well, how big is that really? This is the range for many of these evergreens that we're talking about, not across the whole site, but in these particular locations. We're looking at spec and, you know, twelve to fourteen, sixteen up to twenty two, twenty four feet. So that's why this is where the money is going.
And is that overlap with the irrigation of those areas too? Cause aren't they the screening area where eventually you're gonna, after establishment, you're gonna let that?
After establishment, hopefully though.
Right. And so with the size of the trees on day one, you might need more than a year potentially for establishment?
Usually we say two years for establishment and lead will support that. Because it's just sometimes, you know, it depends on when things go in, but two years is typically. Yes, yes, exactly. Yeah.
From the nest on year one.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Um, so we have pretty pictures of what we're looking at, but this is all taken from the diversity of the trees that we're looking at in this, like number one, where we're really pulling from the, you know, existing more mature forest, trying to support that throughout the, the project. And I think from a habitat side, we're really excited to see what this can do. Um, all of these will be great fit for this location. Um, lots of year round interest. So we're highlighting the evergreens here just because of the screening. So these, but flowering trees, great spring, great fall color, great habitat, things that, you know, usually um you get in your berries on your shrubs and stuff, which is also part of the whole scene, but um, lots of different texture, lots of interest is what we're really going for, for throughout the entire site. I think the, the fall color really being something that'll be amazing from one twenty eight that really pops. Um, this last one, we know this is not native. Sometimes, sometimes you just gotta go with a big honking green giant to get you to have that fast screening. Um, from a, you know, also from a cost perspective.
Then on the berm or around the generators on the berm? So it's gonna backdrop to the stuff happening at the front.
So it's, it's gonna be like, they're up on this berm.
Yeah.
And around. So this is the generator. This is what we burned, we burned up here too. Um, we have a section coming through, but this was about fencing. So one of the questions was about fencing. So we have only two types of fences on the project, one being a fence on top of a retaining wall here as a utility piece um to screen that and we'll do the section. So we're like, really, really, it's gonna be, it's really gonna be that big? Um, and so this is, it gets to your questions too about the elevation. So we're setting this doing a retaining wall around it. And this is an eight foot high fence that's on top of the retain wall. And then the berm happens and this gets really heavily planted. Then you come down, this is our ring road and this is where we're brushing up to the other side of Brady is over there. Uh, we have to do a lot of these studies. I think um the president, Michael Combe is really, he does not want to see any of these things, which you know, is kind of driving the, the, a lot of the design decisions to really kind of gang up the plant material gear, which is helpful for us from a design perspective, but the pedestrian experience is gonna be lovely throughout the whole site, but this is where the generator is behind. This is the garage. The generator is back in there. So this is the type of fencing that we're thinking about to actually is not a full um hundred percent opacity, but eighty percent that would be on top of that retaining wall to help screen some of these large generators. We're really, this coupled with the berming, coupled with the plant material is gonna do the job. The other area that we have fencing is the guard rail. Um, which is the same material that we're intending to do from the, the architectural side of it. So it's a forty two inch high guard that if you look at the grading here, uh, the grade starts to drop down and we're putting that fencing lower, planting around it. So you're, it doesn't inhibit the fuse. That's the intention. So it's a little like a, like a haha kind of thing. Where you don't see that, but it's, it's gonna be the same material as we have um all the guard rails on the, on the building. So it feels very seamless. And then uh, I think there was a question about the generator for phase two, which I mentioned earlier. But this is the proposed location for it. Um, all of this vegetation is beyond our limit of work, so that would stay. And so we would kind of come back in and kind of beef this up more. You start to see a, a little bit of the grades that show the edge of this berm here. So this is tucked down from the building, but we do, we will be looking at it screening more closely from this side of things.
Good question on the generator in terms of the noise. I don't know how they're being exercised monthly, but is there any um noise impact for neighbors or?
Well, we currently exercise our generators weekly for fifteen minutes. Their service in the monthly business.
Yeah.
I mean, they make noise, but you know, you, you can, uh, you can abate some of that noise with um you know, some attenuation equipment and stuff that can be put on the exhaust.
Yeah.
Uh, to minimize that, but it will make a little bit of noise for sure.
Yeah, but you've cited them in ways that they're not creating it considering that way. Okay.
That's what I hope. That's, yeah, so open for question.
Um, you, but I don't need to monopolize, so I can wait.
It's all yours.
Um, great presentation, Lynn. I'm, I'm really excited about the diversity, the planting palette and the um you know, the working with the wildlife biologist. Um, a few questions. You didn't talk on this um presentation about the accessible pedestrian route through the campus. Can you just?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. Uh, so the everything has a sidewalk and the material changes. We tried to also, in certain locations, it's asphalt, then we go to concrete, whereas a little bit closer to the front of the, of the building. Um, this is where the handicap parking is and for the visitors and the front entry. So this is all accessible, universally accessible coming up. We worked um very closely to get those grades to work. We do have a little uh boardwalk with stairs walkway up there. I think that's kind of T V D. Um, but so this is, you know, where accessible parking happens. And then you come out here at the upper quad. This is also a tiered condition, but it's also, it's a five percent walkway. So we have an upper piece and lower piece of all of it, universally acceptable.
And so that first walk, not the boardwalk, which is sort of a, another option if you choose to go that way, but the, the main entry is the accessible one there.
Yes. Yep. Um, accessible route to the garage too. The idea is that most people, if they park in the garage, will go through the connector to the building. But you can, we, we've worked that out over that bridge. Um, then the site gets steeper. So this stuff is not universally accessible, just because it's what we have to accommodate. But down at this lower level, you can come out and this is uh the, the pathway through here. And I think all the way up through these blockways are universally accessible. But then here, that this kind of the road gets a little bit steeper. So coming out, this whole piece is accessible. This whole piece is accessible, I think even over to here. Um, and then just from the pedestrian standpoint, we have a sidewalk that runs around the whole thing. I think what we really like down here is peeling that sidewalk, that pedestrian access away from the roadway. So it's just a nicer experience. You're really moving through, you're moving through like a woodland nearly down here. Um, we worked this berm condition here, so it, it hides the quarry garden from the roadway. Lots of spill out, we imagine, from, from the building actually out here and that this is a, a spot where you could actually eat a lot of events and other things, but. But for folks that want to get out and do their laps at lunch, you know, it's, I think we calculated before, I'm not gonna quite remember.
Yeah, I knew you were gonna go.
I know. You backed you on that, but we did, we did calculate, so you could, so people could, yeah, how many, what is it for a lap? But even down here, we did connect, this is a, a 5% walkway that brings you down to move between the rain garden and the storm water to tend to basin, which we thought was also, again, that like getting out and doing a lap in the middle of the day, access that way. And then we do have that, the trailhead parking and then a connection to the bottomless trails up there. So you can walk the perimeter of the entire site, even with some nooks and crannies in here in a safe, you know, way. So you're off of the vehicular roads and.
There's lighting, there's pedestrian lighting, pedestrian lighting.
Yeah. Yes, yes, next meeting, HU will cover that. But yes, everything is, there's, there's safety pedestrian lighting, low level along the whole walkway.
Okay, great. And then the connection to the trails, the, I see the yellow indicating the trail on there. I think that actual trailhead is going through CST land. Is there any kind of discussion with the trustees about a permanent easement with the trail?
Yes, yes. It's been drafted and it's going to provide for a 16-car parking lot and access on the loop road.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great. I think I just had a couple more questions. One of them was related to soils. You did talk a lot about the different soil depths and the different typologies. In places where, like in that front meadow entry, where I think you have six inches of soil, but you're also indicating some trees, what's your plan there when you are planting trees in a more limited soil depth?
We picked, so we do it, okay, three, there's six inches in the tree pits.
Okay.
So we don't, generally in the soils diagram, we don't highlight that. But the point there being that that is, I'm trying to go back to that drawing, that that's part of the detail for the individual tree pit.
Yeah.
So that those will be dug in that way. Yeah.
Great. My last question is just how the, working with the restoration apologists, wildlife apologists, how has that, you know, kind of informed your process in a way that's different? What do you think it's really bringing to this landscape plan?
I think it's really helpful to, I think, we always try to say the right plant in the right place. We probably don't get as, as much in-depth existing conditions analysis as what Josh was able to provide. So that was kind of interesting to see that, like, you know, things that we might do, maybe intuitively, it's ba, it's, it's like fact-checking us the whole way. And to collaborate on another, a bigger plant nerd than, than me, to really see of, you know, how we can just amp up the biodiversity here and in a really responsible, sustainable way. I think that's what's been really fascinating through, through all of this.
Yeah. Are you thinking about plant hardiness zones in that conversation too?
Yes, we, we, exactly. I think, I know they recently changed things and made them, you know, a little bit warmer. I still say that we have very cold snaps, and so I'm not moving everything to like, I, I want a zone four, zone four, zone five plant material up there because, you know, we're still getting very cold moments in the winter. And the heat is one thing, irrigation helps us with that, you know, or at least for establishment, but trying to hit that sweet spot, yeah.
And things like sugar maples, or maybe, we'll see how they do basically.
Yeah, well, and, and this is where I think we're, the other thing we're trying to do is balance straight species versus cultivars. Because there are total benefits to cultivars. With just that reason, they're kind of, you know, genetically designed to do this thing. But at the same time, I'm coming back to realizing that straight species are not something that you should just do in a buffer zone area that there is from the, from the overall diversity of genetic material, that straight species, finding the ones that are gonna do well, because not be all flappy, or you find a straight species that could be, you know, we know they're there for a reason, but like tuck them behind something let them do well. I think that was, that's been interesting too.
And then will biohabitats work with you all on the operation maintenance plans? Or how you actually manage these landscapes? Because you do have all these different typologies set up, and some of them are gonna require different milling remedies and different inputs. Do you leave the leaves and how often do you mow and all that? It would be a shame to get to do this amazing work that you're doing and then have your sort of typical commercial landscape company come in and just destroy.
Most volcanoes. Yeah. No, I think, I think the whole team will be working together and, you know, Matt's group has their environmental side too. I think it's gonna be, you know, we want to make it realistic for Peter. This is the big thing too. It has to be maintainable. That's part of sustainability and a really key part of it. So as we're working through this, there is going to be areas that get less regular maintenance by design, and that's okay. And then some areas that will get more maintenance because it's the front of the building and, you know, the little pods, it's like beautiful planting in certain places. So we're trying, we're, we're working very hard, it's a hierarchy.
Yeah.
Great, a question.
Thank you.
Done.
Thank you.
And we appreciate Laura's expertise in this area. So any question, other questions or comments from the board? Any public comments specifically about landscape, stormwater? And I don't limit to two minutes. Mrs. Gates.
Erin Gates, here I am again. I can play, this is coming from someplace else elsewhere. And I thought, oh, planning board, I wonder what's going on, so I'd be here because I'm so pleased for what you're doing. I don't think anybody else in this town has done a plant like this one for anybody built for the large scale. I want, what is the percentage of the building comparing to the site? Like one third?
Pull it up for you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
To the one third place of the building actually to the site.
How much of the building, how much of the site is the building covered?
Right, right. I mean, approximately, you know, doesn't matter, because you can see, you know, it uses a lot of space compared to.
Good question, thank you. Anybody online have any comments or questions?
And, I have, I have to say. I know that you cited so well about what is appropriate. I, I'm very knowledgeable, very interested in plants and trees and everything all my life. And I think you're doing such a great job in planning everything. I think it's great for this town to hear you, because, and I wish more people came, because a lot of them complain when something is not heard or read, but if they came, they won't have heard it. And so if anybody hears who like to complain this town that something went wrong, maybe they shouldn't have been here.
Well, okay, Mr. Gates.
The building coverage is 6.6%.
That's amazing, yeah.
All right, Mr. Gates.
Jim Gates, 2011. Parking. I would want some safety and water, the buildings are set. The lessons learned when I pad with parking garages. Early on in Michigan, a parking garage fell apart one afternoon with a whole load of cars and heavily used salt on the roads. A proper surfacing and type of concrete to resist salt penetration. It literally ate up more than a car fluids from oil and gasoline trip too. To the point where it just fell apart. I know in Saudi Arabia, we had to import sand to make concrete because their sand was not the right type. We still use salt in the woods here. This building is going to be built awfully with a Massachusetts building program that anticipates this problem. If not, be sure, with more mind, with this problem coming up. Mr. Biden's mandate to try to get everybody to use electric vehicles. With a whole new dictionary into the large building for parking. Everybody's gonna have to have a charging station, and everybody's gonna have, assuming, lithium engine drives, and we're gonna have a terrible problem if lithium starts exploding. And a large full car, the similar problem, they're gonna have a enormous wildfire which we don't have any way of putting up.
Okay, I'm gonna just stop you right there, Mr. Gates. I gotta, we're talking tonight about stormwater and landscape, so that's traffic question. And I think electric vehicles, electric vehicle safety is a matter for the building codes and the fire department. So thank you for raising it, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep our, it's late and we're gonna keep ourselves to.
More and more.
So let's just, okay, I think you've had your, your comment. Let's move on, because we want to, we've got a lot still to talk about.
Say one more minute.
Nope, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna turn over right now to Weston and Sampson. Mrs. Gates and Mr. Gates.
I, I would appreciate it, because it's very important I say that.
Yep, okay, I gotta turn it over to our consultant at Weston and Sampson. We do appreciate public comments, but I'm trying to, keeping up on topic, on topic, please.
On the topic, I was.
Mrs. Gates, please. Do I need to share with you? You need to, do I need to give you sharing?
I have a few drawings that I was gonna just pull up just for reference, but I can get started just.
You should have access now. While he's pulling that up, I will certainly say to anyone who is listening or also Mr. and Mrs. Gates, if you have comments that you think we haven't heard, you can also write to us. We'll be happy to, and we do read all emails.
All right.
Go ahead.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Darren Kirk, I'm a team leader at Weston and Sampson. My colleague, James Pearson, site civil engineer, has been on the call and will be presenting together today. So I'll just dive right into our topic areas. We will be discussing the topographic changes and clearing, we actually had no comments. We'll be reviewing site development standards, setting standards, landscaping, as was previously discussed, utilities, and then lastly, stormwater and operations and maintenance plans. I had planned for the next hearing to discuss normal standards, so we haven't responded to the, the, so we will the next hearing, he discusses it, he's presenting that information. So diving into our first comment, obviously, we've issued two memos at this point, I told you in June. And we've been tracking responses from the initial files and the supplemental information received from the applicant. So tonight, I'll just be highlighting those open items and questions. So as was mentioned earlier, items 4.3 and 4.6 were addressed with respect to tree protection of existing trees and limiting clearing from utility trenches. Item 4.8, however, is related to construction activities of parking during construction, offices, trailers, stock on equipment, material, and limiting that, those construction phase activities. So we suggest that applicant sort of clarify on the plans where those items are listed for item 4.8 or add to the drawings as they had done 4.3 and 4.6. Again, specific to construction changes, I can fill in clearing. As was also mentioned, the hydro seating, the bylaw requires six inches of loam in all disturbed areas to be completed as lawn or grass. And the applicant will either need to meet that bylaw or request a waiver from the planning board. And I just want to show, I guess, more specifically where that is, because it is a substantial grading change. It's a 2016, it's a mounted area off of a parking that's gonna be the trailhead, so this is gonna be a substantial earthwork in school disturbance area. So the success and erosion controls that are in place by proper planting and vegetation is critical. So the bylaw does call for six inches, so we can be a waiver, and this is the profile of applicants. But in for this, they do have the six inches, they're meeting the standard around the building. But in this one area, as was discussed, there might be future construction, it's sort of out of the immediate work area, but it is being disturbed substantially and graded substantially. So I just wanted to highlight that.
So is that the same area that you've mentioned, although, okay, I didn't realize it had such a big grain?
Great change. Yeah, it's gonna be a large amount, so stability is important.
What is the slope on that?
The finished slope is three to one-ish. What we're trying to do is mimic what's already out there. So as you, so it's, it's currently where the prior tenant was stockpile materials. So as you, this is just large. It's ugly right now, but what we're trying to do is, is we looked at the harder bit through here. It's somewhere between two to one and three to one, so we're trying to do is mimic that as we come up. So it comes up, it's very steep through there, it goes to this. But as we pull this back and then comes up, and then we're gonna come back down, so that whole area kind of becomes a bit more natural.
And that's side facing the road, is it much deeper than that?
I'm sorry, the.
The. Right along the road is even steeper.
The road.
This is even steeper, this is, this is basically what we're trying to do, is get this down. It's 10% through here. We're trying to get it down as quickly as possible, so we could have this more walkable. So that's kind of what I, I'm trying, it's currently kind of steep anyway. That was the area that we were watching.
But then, but then the land form, is that more than three to one at that slope?
This, this landform is two to one.
That's two to one, alright.
And the six inches of, of soil is along the two to one lens? Where's, where, where are you asking for the waiver?
We're asking for the waiver for this piece, where we would only want, we would want for, this is gonna be planted with trees, and we're gonna have to do jute mending and some things there for establishment. But this is this kind of like area that's further out. So even with some steepness here to try to get this, because we're not planting it heavily, we just want to seed it. It will have to have erosion control and things to go down and a quick, you know, germinating mix. But that's just sort of another reason why, cost-wise and stability-wise, to get four, you know, four inches of, of loam out there, soil planting soil would be, that's what we're asking for the waiver.
And that's not irrigated, right?
Correct. And to do it for establishment, interesting, we might, but it might just be, we haven't quite figured that one out yet, yeah.
And I guess my question to Weston Sampson is, is that, does that seem prudent as a waiver? I mean, what's your recommendation on that request?
Sure, for like the lawn and grass here, we would specify six inches. Again, this is not really serving that purpose, it's temporary erosion control, three to one slope is standard slope that we would also use for slope stability, so the applicant, I guess, will pull up that detail too, they are preparing subgrade as well, the 12 inches of material under the four inches will be decompacted at least, so there will be a little bit more root penetration. So it wouldn't be unreasonable. So that covers the initial section, that's some landscape air items, that was still section four. That's what we briefly included the aesthetic standards too, just the only comment that we had open was on May 28th, there was a presentation, a video of the screening from the highway, which is helpful. We were just seeking additional documentation for that, the applicant has communicated that they've done extensive study of the screening, we wanted to just get some more information. The video was one point, we wanted to look at the top graphic high from the highway to review screening. And then moving more deeply into the landscaping. So just one of the items that was noted was that we had asked for additional shade trees in the May response to comment that applicant had indicated that was going to be provided on landscaping plans. We only have the site civil and the traffic plan, so it might just be. We only have the site settled on the traffic plan, so it might just be a patient issue, so.
I think you were looking for four or five trees along the, this side of the, of the base, of the phase two garage. So I think we sent your drawing and said, like, that we can do.
But yeah, the comment, so yeah, we just need the plan from the applicant. So the comment indicated that was addressed and we can confirm that as we get the plan. And then similarly, maintenance, which was discussed, sense of the operations, maintenance plan of landscaping features is critical. That's gonna be developed in construction and understand. So that could be a condition of approval of the planning board receives the copy, would be our recommendation.
Yeah, I just, I just an aside on that, the, when the high school was built, the operation and maintenance plan was developed sort of at the end of construction and it was subject to planning board approval. And I think in that case it was concomitant as well. So, and it was filed with a, you know, some annual boarding and so I think there's precedent for us to.
Right, and then moving into the utilities, which was also touched on. So there's been coordination between the applicant and Department of Public Works on water. There was mention of a bid package that also went out, so we were just seeking that documentation to be able to prove what those connections are beyond the framework's work. Similarly, there's been discussion of a fire alarm system. So we actually didn't receive a response to that comment for eight point five. Which is the fire alarm system. People requested that information from fire chief as well. We would also benefit from that documentation, fire alarm system needs all the requirements. So I think with that, I will transfer it over to my colleague, James Pearson, for the site civil stormwater elements.
Yes, good evening, neighbor and hear me, this is James with Weston Sampson.
Sorry, does he need?
Uh, no, yeah, we're just gonna go through the comments, we'll just, if you want me to pull up the plans I can, James.
Okay, and you can hear me?
Yeah.
Very well, yeah.
Okay, great. So this is our section ten with in our memo, stormwater management standards. So we were looking at this kind of from the standpoint of article twenty-three of the town general bylaws and also the state stormwater management standards and just kind of general good engineering practice. So by and large, we had a number of comments that, that we had made in here that predominantly had to do with just various technical things that, that were kind of like coordination issues between the plans and the calculations that were submitted. And after having gone through these with a couple of different rounds of submissions. It, it appears that, you know, the engineer has for the most part addressed most of the items that we had concerns about. You know, I'm happy to touch on any one of these specifically, if there are any questions anyone has about them. But I think what I'd like to do really is just focus on the ones that I think still kind of remain outstanding. And they are, they're quite honestly things that the board could potentially consider addressing by way of conditions of approval. So one of them being. Let's see here, we have it. Darren, I don't know if we have a copy of our memo in front of us or anything, but it's, it's really under the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards, under standard three. I had commented about. There being a need for some test pits within the rain garden area. So the, the applicant's plans had a number of test pits and boreings throughout the site. And some of them were somewhere in the rough vicinity of the largest of these rain gardens that they're doing. But they're still about sixty feet away. Now, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook tells you you're supposed to do test pits within the footprints of any, anything that's doing infiltration. So they have an infiltration basin and a rain garden, both of which are supposed to be able to infiltrate. I can kind of see why maybe they haven't done the test pits in the boreings right now. And that is because the, the proposed rain garden and proposed infiltration basin are within the footprint of what are currently recreational facilities. So it's like tennis courts and things. And so obviously that would be a little disruptive to those areas. We've often seen other, other boards and other towns grants conditions where they'll kind of allow the projects to get approved under the condition that the applicant go out and do these confirmatory test pits before they get really deeply into construction so that they can sort of confirm the conditions at the exact locations of those stormwater BMPs. And, and, and so they can do so early in the process of, of, really prior to starting any major construction. So that if there's any redesign that's required, it can kind of get dealt with right away. Rather than, you know, halfway through the project and then we find out that the stormwater basin they designed, you know, has a technical problem. So I, I guess my suggestion to the board would be, you know, they haven't done test pits within those footprint of those basins. There's something that should be done. Is it something that we have to force them to do before you guys vote to approve the projects? In my opinion, I think you could probably vote to approve the project, but you could just add this as a condition that they'll use test pits prior to, prior to construction. So then moving along. Just scrolling down, bear with me for a minute, I'm going down through, through the art, my notes here. So under item ten. Actually, no, this was, this was just kind of one of these miscellaneous things that we kind of noticed on here. We had originally noted that there were some discrepancies on the plans between some of the storm, stormwater structures and some of what the calc showed. There still were a few minor inconsistencies, inconsistencies between the calcs and the, and the plans. And that's with regard to some of the renovations of certain structures, specifically catch basins ten, fourteen, drain manhole twelve and drain manhole fifteen. And you know, if the applicant's taking notes, I'm happy to repeat those. But those will be in, in a memo that we'll issue as well. So just a few, a few little minor things there that, that could still be addressed. But again, those could easily, I, I can see those being conditions where, you know, the board could vote to approve the project and just tell them, you know, hey, this is a condition that you just kind of need to clean up these little minor inconsistencies in the plans. And then there was another one with regard to operations and maintenance plans. So under, under article twenty-three, section seven, operation and maintenance plans of the general bylaw. There's a requirement that there's supposed to be a formal operation and maintenance agreement. I looked through the applicant's latest submission and I couldn't find where there was a formal O N M agreement that had been included in there. Again, this could be addressed with a condition, you know, the board could condition the project to say that, you know, the applicant will be required to submit this formal agreement. You know, at whatever point the board feels is most logical for them to do so. So those were really kind of the main outstanding items. And again, all three of them, in my opinion, are things that the board could potentially address just by issuing. You know, conditions as part of their approval. Just in general, you know, looking through the stormwater management design for this project, it, it looks like the applicant is really using pretty, pretty typical kinds of stormwater management features that, that most of us who do stormwater design work are accustomed to using on, on these types of projects. You know, again, it's, you know, there's kind of a pipe to convey system. It discharges to, to things like rain gardens, an infiltration basin. We have one of the basins is actually a wet basin. The, the project was, was noted again due to its traffic volume as being, technically speaking, would fall kind of under the category of a land use with a higher potential pollutant load. You know, and they provided some stormwater BMPs to address sort of the, the, you know, the greater pre-treatment standard that would be associated with that. So that looked reasonable to us. A lot of the parking is happening in a parking garage and the parking garage stormwater runoff, from what I understand, is gonna be run through an oil grit separator. So that's, so that kind of addresses that standard as well. So again, I'm not gonna go through each and every one of these items by item. I was just gonna highlight the things that I think are still just kind of outstanding items. And again, happy to answer any questions if there is a specific concern that anyone has about anything in particular.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren. Okay.
Okay.
I guess the only question I would have is Mark or, and, and on the question of the tests, the, the test pit for the, because that does, those dictate your final design, right?
Yeah, generally, we would, should have those done and completed. I mean, you have equipment up there on the site and I have been tearing up the supports and everything else. So to complete those at this point is pretty.
Yeah, he's, he's absolutely correct, we didn't do it because it's important area. The factor safety that we used on that is significant. I think we have a, our civil contractors out there, when he gets equipment on the site, more than happy to do a test fit. But we do have about two or four holes through the entire site at this point. So we, we're pretty confident about some of that. So if you wanna make any condition of approval, we're more than happy to.
Yeah, I guess the only issue is that if you have to redesign your whole, your system anyway, it's your risk.
I'm confident, we don't need no redesign.
But I mean, that, that is, I guess, that's a real risk.
Well, we've still have some time before.
And it may catch up with us, okay, sounds great. Um, great, I think that concludes things for tonight unless there's Chris or Sue, any comments? Okay, great, thank you, everyone. So we will take a motion to continue. And I think we've decided we're gonna meet on July ninth, it's a Tuesday. I think Mark and I may chat a little bit about, well, not Mark and I may chat about how we're gonna kind of get this thing over the finish line. So there's, in my mind, a possibility we might meet briefly on the night, take up our other special permits that night and add a dedicated cell signaling night, but we'll.
Well, the thing is, you gotta continue it to a date and time certain.
But we, but we could always continue it though, so nice and.
I would suggest that we continue it till the ninth at seven thirty.
And then.
And then we'll discuss, after this, we'll then discuss like the site book and.
No, right.
And so.
Okay, so well, I'll take a motion to continue the cell signaling a public hearing to July ninth, Tuesday, July ninth at seven thirty.
So those.
Uh, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, all right, I think the last thing we have to do tonight, thank you. So if you guys can kind of tiptoe out so we can continue our, our little business here. Um, you need to put yours by one time for the Reed Park. Um, and talking to my, I think, so. There's always the red, white and blue breakfast, we can do that.
You have special parking.
Yeah, special parking. Probably not this day.
I live right around the corner. But whatever.
What about Monday, what about month, next Monday night or? Next Monday night, that's.
That's July.
July first. First, Sue and Chris. July first, it's a month. Okay, why don't we shoot for that and maybe at six?
Where are we gonna meet?
Uh, Reed Park.
Yeah.
At Reed Park.
Reed Park.
Reed Park.
And that, yeah, you got six o'clock, next Monday, July first. And then provided that the applicant.
So yeah, either buy on or pass, one of the other, I don't think.
Okay. Um, great, and we have minutes of June tenth. A motion for the minute, to approve the minutes of June tenth.
Some move.
Some move.
Okay, I got a second from Peter, a motion from Sue, any discussion?
Only that, when I last checked the folder, they weren't in there yet.
What?
When I last checked the folder, sorry, they were not.
They weren't up there, okay.
So I will stay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention, five, yes, one abstention. Any other business? I actually have one other business, which is the bike and pedestrian committee is meeting tomorrow night. I'm gonna try to go, I think they're talking about. But if you're, so many. If any of us can go and just listen to their conversations, they're gonna, they've sent us a memo?
I have a draft that they'll probably discuss tomorrow, which is fairly similar to some of the comments that we brought up and discussed at this meeting about hat water, about traffic comming, about. There's some other requests in there that maybe would have been more than.
Shoot for the moon.
Yeah.
So I think then, then would be. I'm.
But I have a little lawsuit. We're meeting as well. Uh, don't you guys?
No.
And it's in one of these two.
What's in one of these?
Six thirty.
Yeah. So this.
And is it a while?
Are you still on the committee?
Is it tomorrow or Wednesday?
You just started the liaison.
Yeah.
Oh, is it Wednesday?
Yeah.
Twenty six.
Yes, yeah, it's Wednesday because tomorrow's.
It is at six in town hall on Wednesday. But let me know if you can't go. Okay, great, and any other business?
I'm moving to adjourn.
Uh, it's like, I guess everybody knows it's like board voted to send this off to.
Oh, the M B T A.
M B T A, so you're working on the final application.
Yes, colleague says it should be completed, ready to submit by the end of the day, but.
Okay, great, so just make sure we all get.
Call about some legal language and that, so.
Great. Okay, great, I had a motion to adjourn from Chris and I think Gordon was seconding that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.